I've got 6:00 PM. Thank you all for rising. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to their government, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and freedom, and justice for all.
Welcome to the Union Township Board of Trustees' meeting agenda for April 8th, 6:00 PM. Mr. Campbell, at the record show, all three trustees are present. Do we have correspondence this evening? Mr. Campbell?
No, sir, I have not. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Gentlemen, we'll move on. We have proclamations and special presentations. Tonight, we have our Union Township Years of Service Recognition Program. But I'd like for Chief Reese to introduce Officer Derek Disbennett as we celebrate his ten years. And then we'll move on to Matt Taylor for introducing Nick Spiers for his twenty years at the Service Department. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Sergeant Disbennett is, as you stated, a ten-year veteran now of the Police Department. He came to us by way of the State Highway Patrol. And Sergeant Disbennett is another example of a guy that's done things right since he got here. He's served as an FTO for us as a detective. So he trained a lot of our younger officers as a detective for a brief stint before being promoted to Patrol Sergeant. He's hit the ground running. It's been a pretty eventful month. I think Derek would agree with me. And he's just done a great job for us. A hard worker, treats his subordinates well, and just as well with the public. So I'm proud of him, and I hope I get another ten years out of him.
As do I.
Thank you, Chief. Trustee Dills?
Officer Disbennett, how are you?
I'm doing good, sir.
Proud of you. You know exactly why. Not just ten years, thank you for being a part of us for ten years, a long time. And you're gonna retire. I know. You bleed Union Township. I know you do. But I appreciate what you did just a couple weeks ago. Well, not even a couple weeks ago. So I'm proud of you. And I know it's tough to do your job. And so that was an unfortunate situation, but we love you and appreciate you and many more years to come. Just know we got your back.
Appreciate that, sir.
Trustee Becker?
Appreciate all your years of service and wish you even more.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, you know, I seen the news and headlines the other night, in the middle of the night, and reaching out to a few folks about 5:00 AM. Knowing everyone's safe and sound, that's great. Hearing your name pop up, I knew that, one, we were safe and sound because you're out there on the street. And I will never forget your mustache. I know you know that. But aside from that, it's the times that we do see on the headlines and it's the times that we don't see on the headlines that are, you know, countless, countless times that you and the officers go above and beyond call of duty always for us. So we really appreciate it. But yeah, ten more years, fifteen more years, twenty, you know, we'll see where, right? All right. Well, we really appreciate you. Please stick around for us here. We've got a recognition plaque that we'll bring down to you here in just a moment. And, you know, I don't think you asked your question about anything that people love to share, but...
I didn't just talk.
All right. Good to go.
Shake things up a little bit.
I appreciate it, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Obviously, tonight, we have a recognition for Nick Spiers. Mr. Spiers has been with us since, I think it was 2005. So it's been a long time. So he was here, started as summer help, and then he became full-time. And, you know, he's worked, you know, I think he's worked in every division that we have. He has taken the liking to the parks as well. He became a Certified Playground Safety Inspector. Went to the schooling. It's a very challenging test. He's done quite well. He's a hard worker, and he's, I know he's gonna be, you know, here a long time. Appreciate all his dedication. Sometimes, sometimes it's thankless in the winter, but they, you know, they do their best.
Trustee Dills?
Nick, twenty years. Thank you, sir, very much. You got your family here. Introduce them real quick. Go ahead.
That's my wife, Glia, and my daughter Izzy.
Yeah. Thanks for giving them to us for twenty years. Appreciate that very much. And Nick, yeah, you're good people. I echo what Mr. Taylor just said, that, yeah, service can be a thankless job. We all stay at home, and it's warm inside, and yet, you know, we just had twelve, fourteen inches dumped on us in one to two days. You all are out there plowing the streets, making it happen, and I appreciate you very much, what you do. So thank you very much. Yeah. Thanks, Nick.
Trustee Becker?
Yeah, continuing that theme, you know, you guys really define what it means to be an unsung hero. I mean, you know, everybody looks up to the police and fire for the obvious things they do, don't really think so much about the Service Department. You guys are out filling potholes. You guys are out clearing streets, you know, cleaning up trees that, you know, that fall in the road. A lot of this is done in the middle of the night. People don't see it. People don't know about it. But if it's still there in the morning, they know about it, and they let us know about it. So, you know, thank you very much. Appreciate your hard work.
Hey, so twenty years, you've seen a lot through the township. He's got stories. And, you know, one, you know, I hope, I hope that you've enjoyed at least some of the newer equipment here recently. The bigger, better, safer plow trucks during the winter, and the bush hogs that we can have ourself and not have to borrow from Anderson Township. It's just nice to be able to keep that frequency up. And we see it. We see the beautification of the township and, you know, you're really where the rubber meets the road when it comes to all those aspects across the township. And so I'm sure you've had a hand in every, every bit of it, from changing out the, you know, the flowers and the planters in the front here, to the playground maintenance, to, like Trustee Becker said, the potholes and road work, and obviously the clearing. So, yeah, we appreciate it, and thank you for your time and your energy backing this community.
Well, gentlemen, with that, let's carry these down. All right, just, gentlemen, moving forward. Personnel actions, seeing none, continue, public comments. Ladies and gentlemen, there are public comment cards at the back corner of the table by the door. Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to bring that up, hand it to the physical officer. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
And do we have any other public comment cards in at the time? No? Seeing none? Ma'am, if you'd like to... All right. Can I have you come to the podium when you have a moment, ma'am?
Yes. My name is Maria Mailman. I live at forty-five, twenty-eight, Dameron Lane, Mount Carmel, four, five, two, four, four. I'd like to address each of you. I just love this council. I've been binging on YouTube videos, so kinda got your numbers. Which are great. Great. I just love it. And let me start over here.
Chief?
Chief Clements, correct?
Correct.
You're on fire.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm gonna skip over you because you're the main one. I'm gonna come back to you, and it's all good. Mr. Wright, you're actually wearing a tie today. Very good. Actually, I sort of like you without the tie. Anyway, okay.
We like him either way.
Mr. Becker?
Yes, ma'am.
You're on fire, sir.
I'll take that compliment.
And it was also nice to have coffee with you.
The pleasure was mine.
Yeah. Oh, all mine, really.
You're too kind.
And Mr. Lodge?
Loeb.
Loeb.
Close enough.
God, I heard it a hundred times, and I still mispronounce it. I'm very sorry. I notice you always wear a red tie. Wasn't sure if that's Republican or Christmas or what the deal, but let's face it, we're all red, white, and blue here.
Appreciate that, ma'am. Thank you.
And Mr. Dills, of course, I like...
I don't wear ties unless it's a funeral or wedding.
No, I was referring to your...
Oh, my haircut.
I love it. It looks good on you.
It's, it's, uh...
Mr. Clean.
Yeah, nice and clean. Mr. Campbell, I'm sorry I missed you last week. I hope all is well.
All is well. Thank you.
Good. And now, one of you two are responsible for the taking down of the signs or the... Okay. Thank you for that. I couldn't take a left turn off of Dameron one day, and all I could think was, those signs are coming down. And the next time I went to take a left off Dameron, I could actually see. So thank you very much. Okay. So I think I'm back to Chief Reese. With all respect. Okay, so I want to start with, my husband passed in 2016. And shortly after that, I went out to my mailbox to get some mail, and then a police cruiser pulled up. And, hi, officer. And he expressed his condolences on the death of my husband. And I looked at his badge. It was number thirty-two. Won't forget that number. Okay, so... Didn't really want to talk about this with children here, but after my husband passed, I was the most suicidal person in all of Union Township. When the captain was saying, oh, we did this many runs during the month of... I'm like, three of those are mine, you know? But, so I was in a really dark place. I was in a dark place. Every day, I wanted to die. I just looked over at the picture of my husband and said, honey, I'm gonna be with you soon, and I promise I will. But then there was a short time later that there was a knock at my door, and it was EMS with, it was a welfare call. And it was Officer number thirty-two, badge number thirty-two. And he gave me his card, and he said, do call me or text me anytime. I took him up on that. That was 2016. I still text him to this day. I texted him this morning. He texts me back. He always texts me back. So... Yeah, okay, I'm so sorry. I had little cards, but I couldn't read them, so I had to put them on the table. And I didn't bring my glasses up there, but I can see. Anyway, um... Okay, so as a matter of fact, I text Officer Thirty-two so many times that he's like, please text me on a different phone. Here's the number. I just always call on his police phone. Okay, so generally, my texts went like, I'm a mess, I'm a mess, how are you? Would type, usually type back, I'm doing fine, what's going on? And I would express my deepest, darkest thoughts, things that no one should be thinking. But I was, and I did for years. So occasionally, Officer number Thirty-two would knock on my door, and I would go to my door, and he would be like, hi! And it would just fill my heart. He was knocking on my door. He was checking on my welfare. Who does that? And we would talk, and sometimes I would be what he would call, um, sort of evasive and cryptic, and which, which usually was a bad sign for him. And I'd be like, what's going on? And one time, he looked at me and he said, if you break the law, I will arrest you. I'm like, oh, no! You know, I was dumped on it. I couldn't think of anything against the law that I could do. But anyway, I think suicide is against the law, but who's gonna... Never mind. Okay. So he sort of, he's a training officer, and he would bring occasionally his trainee with him, and I would give instructions to that trainee. You watch us guys back. I know you're learning, but watch us back. So I embarrassed Officer number Thirty-two, which I think he got used to. I don't know. But, okay, so he would also come at times where someone, I have a, and I know you, this board has a relationship with Greater Cincinnati Behavioral Health, and they would call sometimes, you know, willing to help with me. And at times, I've met a lot of officers, but at times, Officer Thirty-two would show up, and he would, he wouldn't take cryptic answers. He wanted to know what was going on. He wasn't gonna take yes or no, because I know how to answer those questions. If they asked me, are you suicidal? No, I'm not suicidal. Are you thinking, do you have a plan to harm yourself? Oh, no, I have no plan to harm myself. But when Officer Thirty-two looked me in the eyes, and he said, what's going on? You know, don't talk cryptic to me. I had to tell him the truth. And this one time, I said, I can't go. I can't go to the second floor of Mercy. I can't go. I have a dog. I can't go. That was my concern, my dog. Of course, my dog. He said, I'll feed your dog. And he fed my dog. What officer does that? He fed my dog for seventy-two hours. He came every day and fed my dog. Anyway, so that was more than sweet. So I would like to report that for the past fifteen months, I can say, I've been a happy person. Happy, happy, happy person. And I attribute a lot of that to the positive texts that I got from Officer Thirty-two. He, no matter what I said, he always could show me a different, a different point of view, a different side, tell me I'm strong, you know, things I didn't hear. I don't have a friend in this world. I don't, I didn't, I explained that to him a hundred times. Who cares? Who cares? But he cares. He cares. And I just wanna, I guess what I want to say is, sometimes a friend wears a badge and carries the gun. I know my friend does. And his name is Josh Athorn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
All right. Gentlemen, seeing no further public comments tonight, move on to department reports. Department heads, Fire and EMS Chief Austin Clements.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. In the month of March, the Fire Department responded to one hundred and sixty-four Fire and Service calls, five hundred and forty-four EMS details, made patient contact with four hundred and ninety-nine patients, transporting four hundred and two of those patients, completed one thousand one hundred and fifty-nine hours of training. Were part of ten public education details, which included our quarterly CPR class, CPR class at West Claremont High School and Clough Pike, Your on Fire program. We hosted Cincinnati Children's Doctor for twelve hours of ride-along time. We completed three hundred and ten life safety inspections and fifteen inspections with the Claremont County Building Department. And that concludes my report.
Trustee Dills?
No, I will after Chief Reese.
Trustee Becker?
No.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Police Department Chief Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. In the month of March, the Communications Center handled five thousand two hundred and one calls for service from Police, Fire, and EMS, and our records section processed five hundred and eleven juvenile and adult court-related documents for court. We also processed seventy-two court notices requiring officers' appearance at court, processed nine Rule Sixteens for prosecutor's office, issued one vendor permit, handled a hundred and thirty records requests, and redacted seventeen video, uh, body cam videos. In the area of public relations and crime prevention, officers conducted seventeen public relations events during the month of March, including numerous citizen ride-alongs and an advisory board meeting at the Grant Career Center. In the area of the patrol and operations, we took three hundred and seventy incident reports, one hundred and fifteen crash reports, conducted five hundred and eighty-eight traffic stops, issued one hundred and ninety citations, four hundred and fourteen written warnings, made sixty-nine criminal arrests, eighty-nine traffic arrests, and served seventy-two warrants. The Union Township Honor Guard participated in two events in the month of March, including the fiftieth anniversary of the Vietnam War at Veterans Park, and we also attended the Ohio Crime Prevention Association's conference, which was actually held at the Holiday Inn this year. It's typically up in Columbus. So our Honor Guard was asked to perform there. And our officers attended a hundred and fifty-two hours of training in the month of March. I do want to add one thing. Happy to report that our drone program is still paying dividends. We typically get calls for mutual aid. We did, in fact, in March, get a call from Pierce Township Police Department to help them in the search of a credible missing runaway, twelve-year-old. We were actually able to deploy the drone and located him with the use of the infrared. It was a night that was, there was particularly inclement weather. So I'm happy that, A, we were able to help out a local police department, to be able to recover a juvenile in distress. So again, the drone's proven to be a very useful resource for our police department. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Trustee Dills?
Yeah, I wanted to wait till both of you finished. Yeah, so Union Township, we're in suburbia Cincinnati, so it's not like we have a lot of big events. And so, but in the past, I'll say, month to six weeks, we've had two, what I would consider big events, especially for our township. And I don't want to get into too much detail, because I'm sure it's still ongoing investigation, but, you know, one, one guy was in a standoff for an hour and wound up ending his own life. And then, you know, one recently, lady going the wrong way, and we had to, police officers had to take her out, and unfortunately, she didn't survive. But, you know, our officers and firefighters, you know, they, they see stuff that people should not see. And they're expected to do their job and then go home to their families and put their sales cap on and pretend like it didn't happen, you know, and be with their wives and kids and their husbands and such. And so, but I'll tell you, I didn't really realize that we didn't have a professional counselor on retainer. I didn't realize that until these past couple events. And so we got that now, and I don't really care about the cost. I need to make sure our guys are good, that we stay sharp and at peace, and that, so that's now readily available. But before we move on, I just want to, if it's okay with you, both of you, I'd like to mention who they were, and then I'll just say thank you. So that's all right, both of you. So, so Officer Cazo, Officer Smith, Officer Alex Smith, Officer Cooper, Officer Torek, Officer Puckett, Officer Disbennett, who was just here, Officer Bach, and Officer Hale, firefighter Gilpin, firefighter Busak, Redzin, sorry, Razimowski, Highland, Green, Huff, Clamo, and Assistant Chief Terrell. And then our two dispatchers were Dunn and Henderson. I called, I tried to call each and every one of you to see how you're doing, make sure you guys are okay. So appreciate you guys' hard work very much, and just know that Township's got your back. I hate that we had to go through that. It happened. Both serious instances happened in the past five weeks. And just know that we appreciate you guys, and chiefs, pass that along, that we have their back and whatever they need, whatever help they need, and just appreciate their hard work. So sorry they had to go through that. That's all I got. Thank you, sir.
Trustee Becker?
So I guess what I want to leave with here, Chief Reese, is a question about Officer Hawthorne. We heard a lot of good things about him tonight. Is he, is he unique? You know, being, you know, way as described, sounds like a saint. I, you know, have no argu- I, you know, have no argument with that. Is he unique in that regard, or is that pretty much, pretty common throughout your department?
Well, I think our, I think a majority of our officers have a big heart. Some don't get commented on, and I appreciate those comments, ma'am. That doesn't surprise me about Officer Athorn. He's a good man and a better patrolman. But I think we've got a lot of people like that, you know, some of them unfortunately don't always get noticed, but I think that's typical with our people.
Good to hear. Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, we've seen in recent years, a lot of bad press around the country regarding the police. And it's rare we hear such, such good stories like we heard tonight. It's very refreshing.
Thank you.
The other thing I want, and, you know, I'd like to go through these call-out reports and I pull out a couple of them I find notable. And I understand there's, there's limited things you can tell us, but there was a situation, somebody got charged with felonious assault. But apparently it was a daycare center, a five-month-old, a five-month-old, got a fractured leg. How does that happen? Is there any indication of how that occurred? I mean, it had to have been intentional, or there wouldn't have been charges filed.
Yeah, to answer your question, Mr. Becker, I believe that incident occurred in other jurisdictions. We didn't find out till we obviously sent officers down and did some question and answer. But rest assured, it's been passed on to the appropriate agency, along with the evidence that we collected, and I'm sure it's being taken care of.
The last one I have for you is over on Forest Run Drive. For, I don't know, months of, not years, I've been hearing complaints, and so it's Police Department, about somebody setting off bombs. So, I see there's been an arrest. The Shaler Park neighbors are very excited about this. I don't know that anybody wants this guy to go to jail, just, they just wanted a stop. So, it appears that he was illegally manufacturing homemade fireworks. Is this a felony-level type of offense, do you know? Or do you have any idea what he's gonna be charged, or what he has been charged with?
Well, we believe they'll be felony-level offenses. Whether or not, when it's adjudicated, it comes out that way, I can't guarantee. And, you know, not the crime of the century, but I think it's a quality of living crime, and the people in that neighborhood have been, you know, past their wits' end. And so, I'm hoping that we put a stop to that. We'll see.
Yeah, I mean, we hear every, every Fourth of July, or right after that, about, you know, dogs that, you know, don't like the booms or the fireworks. And this is something that goes on, or has been going on, not just on any holiday, but I think it was during the Super Bowl, depending on, you know, who scored a touchdown, he was lighting off some big bombs in his backyard.
Yep.
You know, and it was like he's playing the game of catch me if you can. So, kudos to your people, and I guess the neighbors who were, you know, reporting him and giving you tips and stuff to get him. You guys got the search warrant. It's just that you made a lot of people happy, and I just wanted to, you know, call that one out for the public, that, once again, our police department's come through.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Totally helped.
Thanks, Trustee Becker. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not super keen and up to speed on a lot of social media stuff, but as you just make those comments, Trustee Becker, it does recall a time or two that I've seen the frequent question in the community that is like along the lines of, "What was that boom? Where was this boom from? Did someone just hear that boom? And it sounds like maybe we found the boom." And, I don't know, maybe that's something that we should get communications out to let people know, 'cause it seems to be one of the hot topics. And the raricains that I do see social media, you sometimes see that frequent thread there of, "Where's the boom? Sounds like we got it." So, good job, Chief.
Thank you.
You got the boom. Good job. All right. Gentlemen, we'll continue on with our Service Department, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Lo. From March first through the thirty-first, twenty-one burials were performed, generating twelve-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Eleven resident graves were purchased for seven-thousand-seven-hundred, five columbarium niches for nine-thousand-two-hundred dollars, and five cremation scattering gardens for three-thousand dollars. The total amount generated for the period was thirty-five-thousand-eight-sixty-two-seventy-five. In the Parks Division, the landscape areas, or the landscape area maintenance continues, and the mulching, we're down to just Veterans Park, and it, all properties have been mulched. And then, also, we started mowing today from, you know, obviously, the recent rain events. So, it's been a challenge. So, and then in the Roads Division, a total of one-hundred-and-thirty-six potholes were repaired on over twenty townships, twenty-eight township roads, and sixteen work orders were completed on multiple township streets. And that concludes my report.
Trustee Dills?
Mr. Charlie, great job. They're busy for springtime, so, good job. Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
Trustee Becker?
I'm out.
Mr. Taylor, things going well? People using the tool on the website to report potholes and the like?
Yes, actually, it's, there's been an influx. We've had quite a few.
Sorry.
Yeah, so, that's okay. But we keep track of them better that way.
That's what I love. I love to have a data-informed decision and the fact that we are repairing more roads than ever, and we'll keep going.
And we're, we'll keep, you know, we'll keep accurate reports on everything.
Sounds great. That's great. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, sir.
Great utilization of the new communication tools on the website. Speaking, oh, we'll hold that one for a minute. Planning and zoning, Mr. McCormick?
Thank you. For the month of March, in terms of enforcement, we had fifty-three inspections, eleven complaints, three unfounded complaints, two warning citations, two fifteen-day non-compliance letters, one thirty-day violation letter, eight cases resolved, we had four-hundred-and-seventy-one illegal signs removed, thirteen violations, monthly total, six re-inspections of violations, and no nuisances filed. In terms of permit activity, we had one commercial permit, five changes of use, five signs, one temporary sales permit, two temporary signs, nine single-family homes, two additions, nine accessory structures, fifteen pools or fences, forty-nine permits for the month and a revenue of nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars, and Fire Department revenue of fourteen-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. Other than that, I was gonna note that I saw, 'cause I drove by the site in the last couple of days, that the Wawa is coming out of the ground. McDonald's site, looks like it's getting ready to come out of the ground next to Wawa. Across from that, in Mount Carmel, the gateway to Mount Carmel, Commercial Center, all that site has been demolished, or it looks like it's being demolished, so there's a lot of activity there in Mount Carmel. Hopefully, we'll be able to reinvigorate the, or expand what's offered at the park with some things we're working on for grants. Of course, there's a lot of activity there at the old high school site, things coming out of the ground, the CRG and Vision sites. Ellington is finished, should be occupied mostly. And, of course, a lot of work there on Ivy Point. Just some things I've noticed here in the last couple of days driving around when I get out and about, so, just like the flowers are blooming, the projects are coming out of the ground.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Trustee Dills?
Corey, good job. Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Becker? Hey, great work. Keep it up. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Community Engagement, Ms. Lisa R. Community Engagement Manager, our first quarter update.
All right. Our social media followers continue to grow. We're up to a little over six-point-four-thousand followers. Additional engagement opportunities will help heighten that interaction. For example, for our movie night in May, we're asking residents to vote for which movie they like. Prior to kickoff for summer events, Union Township will be found on Instagram as well, so we're gonna hit a younger crowd with that. We promoted Union Township in the Discover Claremont magazine this year, which is available in print and online, encouraging visitors to explore all the region has to offer. There are copies outside, if you guys would like one. The Township's open and click rates on the e-newsletters continue to perform above the national average. Residents can look for the next newsletter at the end of this month to include community events and township updates. We also have some exciting spring community engagement opportunities coming up. Each year, the Union Township Police Department partners with Crime Stoppers for the annual Crime Stoppers Drug Drop and Paper Shred Event. This event provides an opportunity for residents to safely dispose of any unused or expired prescription drugs and over-the-counter medications. Residents are also encouraged to bring personal documents, such as financial statements for shredding. And you can bring those disposable items to the Furniture Fair located four-three-six-three East Gate Drive from eight AM to noon on Saturday, April twelfth. You're also invited to make an impact on the environment at the annual Spring Litter Cleanup Event located at the Union Township Civic Center on Saturday, April twenty-sixth. The event organizers, Claremont Soil and Water Conservation District and the Adams-Clearemont Solid Waste District, are currently recruiting volunteers to help clear trash and incly debris in several parks, waterways, and other shared open spaces across the county. Registration is available at springlittercleanup.com. We've also posted that link out on our social media account as well. A family night will be held, a family movie night will be held on Saturday, May third, at Veterans Memorial Park. A post was just recently put out this weekend to start voting for the movie. The choices are The Wild Robot or Despicable Me Four. So go out and vote. The Township's annual family fishing event is on Saturday, May seventeenth, at Clepper Park. This event is a great way to introduce family and friends to the sport of fishing, as well as challenge yourself as an experienced fisher. Registration for the event begins at nine AM near the Clepper Park pond, followed by catch-and-release fishing. The Farmer's Market is open for applications through Friday, April twenty-fifth. Included participants will be emailed a vendor agreement prior to Tuesday, April twenty-ninth. And the Farmer's Market will begin Friday, June sixth, and run through Friday, September fifth, excluding Friday, July fourth. Our Summer Concert Series kicks off on Friday, June sixth, with the Bronson Arroyo Band. That evening will begin with the Farmer's Market at four PM, beginning at six-thirty, food trucks and a beverage stand will be available through nine PM, and live entertainment begins at seven PM, so we're looking forward to nicer weather. With the weather becoming nicer, you may see our park ambassadors out and about in the parks, wearing volunteer t-shirts. Please feel free to reach out about any questions you may have. If you'd like to be a park ambassador, you're welcome to go onto our website and fill out an application. Our Service Department will be in contact with you. The Parks and Recreation Committee has taken interest in beautification of parks and areas in the township. Be on the lookout for incremental updates in the parks in Mount Carmel as we, as well as potential opportunities to get involved. For more information about upcoming events, please visit the Township's website at www.uTclaremont.com. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Dills?
Ms. R, well done. You're absolutely killing it. So, keep it up. We're doing good things, so, and you're a lot to put that responsibility on, so I appreciate you very much. Thank you, Ms. R.
Trustee Becker? Well, hey, thank you for what you're doing. The movie night vote, that sounds interesting and exciting, and a nice step forward from last year as well, more engagement with the community, so thank you for what you're doing. But across the board, I think you helped drive home and promote the transparency, accountability, and communication that we're striving for here in Union Township, and being able to be accessible to all residents and hear from the residents. So, just, you're doing great work, so, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Administration, Mr. Corey Gray?
Thank you, sir. And I'll be brief. My voice is not great this evening, so I apologize. So, on the Clepper Park Waterline Project, police report, we got the EPA approval back. That's a huge hurdle. Drinking Water Division approved that, and so, now, we are in the process of putting together the bid documents to go out to three different contractors. Mr. Taylor and Mr. McCormick are working on that. CIC will lead that project as part of that Township CIC, Claremont County Collaborative, so that'll help us get the main infrastructure back there. And I guess the splash pad guys are ready to go, basically just start at the same time, so we'll build both projects and kind of meet in the middle. So that's exciting news. Sorry it took so long on that. EPA moves at the speed that EPA moves, and that's, that's just the way it is. Sewer line at Champion's Way is open, tested, inspected, functional, open for business, so that's good. I appreciate both of those gentlemen down there helping to push that rock up the hill. So, that, that was a significant project. Concrete work here at Civic Center is generally complete. Hopefully, people saw some of the pedestrian improvements that are out there to kind of make it safer and easier for people to meander about the site during the Farmer's Market. We have one other improvement that's gonna be a little bit more work. Gotta look at some grading and some other things. Mr. Taylor's done a good job with that thus far. Unfortunately, the weather didn't cooperate as well as I thought it would, but thankfully, we were able to get that done, so. We have some JED appointments for the board this evening. These are sort of some initial housekeeping items for the new JED nine, and then some prior JED board reappointments. We are fully engaged in the 2024 audit process with the state of Ohio. We have to have the state come in every so often, and they are in right now, and that's a Herculean lift. The fiscal office is really doing the bulk of that. There's multiple components to that audit. There's a single audit for your ARPA funding, and then the CIC, and then the Township. And I think the ARPA funding audit is done, and that was clean and no issues. So, we expect the other work to continue. Waiting back to hear, hear back from the school district on a proposed TIF district. We have a maintenance agreement tonight with County Engineers Office, just kind of formalizing our maintenance standards. We have some other items, waterline easement, permission to do a design-build process, initiated design-build process for the carbon reduction grant. The funds have been committed. I do have an item this evening for Mount Carmel Revitalization Grant Program. That was a project that we worked on about thirteen or fourteen years ago, where there were dollar-for-dollar grants administered to the CIC to help give properties a facelift in Mount Carmel, and I'll save that for that agenda item, but I just wanna bring that to the board's attention. We have disposal ordinance this evening. We have a resolution to resubmit for CDBG funding, and then we have the first of many different pieces of legislation to begin looking at forming a new community authority, which is another economic development tool that we wanna have available in our toolbox to be able to use it. If people don't use it, they don't use it. It's all affirmative and participatory. That means people have to want to do it, to be included in it, but at least we'll have the bones of the, the district, you know, formed if the board wants to move forward with that. And it's multi-step, multi-meeting, so. Couple of other items. We suffered a little bit of damage from the storm events at Mount Carmel Park. We had a tree fall on the playground. Mr. Taylor's working through the claim on that, on that playground set. And then we had significant straight-line wind damage at Clepper Park from like a microburst or something that came down and just blew the fence over. I mean, it was significant. I guess some kind of cell just ripped through there, so, we're working on that. And then the last thing, you know, as the board knows, we submitted a LWCF application to the Out Department Natural Resources for a significant project at Veterans Park. It was a fifty-fifty grant for a playground renovation. And, you know, we had fifty-three projects that were submitted throughout the state of Ohio. We scored very well. We scored fourteenth, nine points from the top-scoring application. They only had enough funding to fund the first nine. So I'm back to square one. So I'm looking for some direction from the board this evening on the playground set. I know Mr. Taylor has prepared an estimate. We have one estimate back, it's eight-hundred and, from Mid, is that Midstates or Midstates? Eight-hundred-and-seventy-something thousand dollars? What's that, Mr. Taylor? Eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars, and then I think they're getting a second quote, it's a little higher, from DWA, which is the splash pad contractor. Both of them are source-well-approved contractors. You know, but I need some direction. Do I go back and try to refine the application and resubmit? Or do we go forward and move forward on the project, knowing that, you know, the existing playground set's more than twenty years old, I think? Mr. Taylor? It's north of twenty years old. And as part of that, we were gonna relocate it from the existing spot where we have the drainage issues and stuff, over to closer to the restroom and shelter, and relocate the sand volleyball, so that it's up, it's positively drained, and it's closer to the facilities. Anybody with kids knows that... Anybody with kids knows that, you know, you don't want them to have, run across parking lots and stuff to go use the bathroom, and I know like when my son was playground, and he still played Grand Age, you know, he can find a bathroom, you know, with a blindfold, and he knows exactly where the facilities are, so I know that's a problem, you know, for a lot of people with young families, so. So I sort of need some direction from the board on that, you know, and obviously, we'll do, I'll push forward whatever the board wants to push forward on that, so. I have a proposal, I think, I got proposals, I think you guys have a proposal in front of you this evening, but I appreciate the board's consideration, get, you know, some direction on that, so. Includes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Trustee Dills.
Mr. Wright, good job. Very well detailed. I know you did a lot of homework, and then glad to see you well from the fluke, so I appreciate you constantly working on this, so we've had some late-night conversations, so very much appreciate it, sir. Thank you very much. And this is going to come up for conversation, but I don't want to say who, but as far as the playground, we, you're working with some local businesses, and I don't want to mention their names at all because it's not finalized, but we're looking at some local businesses to do a private-public partnership to potentially offset the cost of a playground, and you have to give it some advertising and put up a billboard of some kind, not billboard, but a signage.
Yes, sir, so that was something that Ms. R. and I spoke about, you know, looking at both, a couple of significant, you know, contributions to help offset that, maybe a broader capital campaign that, you know, we could fund now, and then try to recoup those through a, through a capital campaign to help offset that, and I don't know what that amount's going to be, but, you know, to get a naming sponsorship-type thing is going to be significant. And again, it's all, you know, dependent upon what people's capacity is to do that, and what the timing of that, and, you know, we would be creative in how we would allow that to be structured, you know, if we could get a meaningful contribution on that, but my concern is, is that that could take months or longer to put together a real capital campaign, and so, again, do we move forward and then try to back, backstop that, you know, later, and, and give people an opportunity to be a part of that?
Good.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Good to hear, sir.
Trustee Becker.
Mr. Chair, do we want to talk about the playground equipment now or later on in the meeting?
It will come up for discussion, and what, Mr. Wright, you looking for, is there a vote later for the playground equipment, or do you just need direction?
I just need direction, because, you know, at the end of the day...
So no purchase order?
We don't have a purchase order yet. We literally just received the quote, I think, at 3:30 or 4:00 o'clock today. And if it's something that the board wants to, you know, take action on and just make an affirmative, go submit a purchase order, you know, I can get that. Mr. Campbell has ways to get the purchase orders out to the board for electronic signature, you know, we, as soon as we can get them routed through, and then they'll show up on the next agenda, we read them out loud, and that's, that's common when we have larger purchases or time-sensitive purchases that happen in between meetings, so I just am more looking for an affirmative.
If you want that direction, is it possible that we modify the requisition listing for the purchase order and have a placeholder with the detailed description and dollar value?
Mr. Campbell, we could just...
I think all we're looking for at this point is some direction. If you guys want to move forward with it, if you don't want to move forward with it, so we know where we're at, and the way this would work, if, if, if we're lucky enough to get some supporting businesses or whatever that wants to be a partnership with us, we would pay for the project upfront, and then we would do a reimbursement resolution to refund where we take the money from, which is a common thing we do. Normally, the way that works is you got 60 days after the project is finished to reimburse the project, so.
I think the question I had is, do we talk about that right now, or is it later on in the agenda?
I, I think you could just, if you wanted to give us an affirmative direction now, I would have all I need to go in and then put the purchase orders in, and then finalize it and get it to the board.
So I guess we're talking about it now?
Yeah. I'm good with that. So I give the floor to...
Yeah.
You already opened up, so, yeah, give the floor to Mr. Becker.
Go back around to Mr. Dills. So, yes, give you my two cents worth. I went and looked at the playground equipment today at Veterans Park. I was, I found it to be very sturdy, very good condition. You know, there was, there was a couple of sections maybe could use a coat of paint. The mulch could certainly use some work underneath it, but the playground equipment, it stood on it. It's solid, you know, I'm finding nothing wrong with it at all. I, you know, I think it was like close to zero chance I'm going to support replacing that playground equipment. The only, you know, what could twist my arm, if we had a grant or some community partnership involved, where the township expense in replacing it is less than 50% of the entire cost.
Trustee Dills.
Well, me and Mr. Becker have a very good, respectable relationship, and then, but I couldn't be further from where he is at. I try not to smile when you're, because I, how do I say this respectfully? Veterans Park Playground is pitiful, and I never go there, ever, and my kids never go there. We hate it. We don't go there. I don't like it. Whenever it rains, it's disgusting. The playground is pathetic. I think you get my point. I go to Julis, and I go to Batavia. That's where I go all the time, or Klepper. I, we've been going to Klepper a lot, so I don't go to Veterans. I don't like it. My kids don't like it, and it's over 20 years old, and the new playground will be just like Klepper. It'll have a 20-year warranty, so the next 20 years trustees don't have to worry about it. It should have been handled a long time ago, and I would say this, it needs to be replaced, and if we don't want to replace it with money that we have available, then we need to consider a parks levy, like Miami Township Anderson. And if we don't want to do that, which I'm adamantly against, I'm opposed to that because I hate property taxes, there's no doubt about that, so I think if, I mean, Mr., I would say that, I can't speak much about Hamilton County, but I know that on the east side of Cincinnati, I've got the best administrator sitting right here. That's one of my, my, my best decisions I've made in my three and a half years as trustee, so he'll find the money. I'm not worried about it. He'll find a public-private partnership, and I'm not worried about that, but I, I think it's much needed, and when I, when I campaigned, I made it crystal clear on a few things. Absolutely no more apartment buildings, and I've held true to that word. We voted down everyone that's come across. No more senior homes. I voted down everyone that's come across. I said, so any, by the way, any development we see, that was before we took office, so it's not, it's not us, and I promised I would give us a cool restaurant bar. I failed on that. We tried, but we struck out, but we're going to, we're going to get back there, and I promised to take care of the parks my first four years. That's my promise, and so we found a way to make it happen, and I think you know where I'm going. I'm 100% favorable, so that's my thoughts.
A tiebreaker.
Well, I mean, longer memory here during and shortly after Klepper Park opening up and seeing how impactful the upgrades at Klepper Park were and received by the community. I just, I firmly have the same position I had then, which was, here's the direction you guys plan for and move forward on upgrading Veterans Park, because to me, without echoing the same issues and sentiment, financially, fiscally, conservative, taking care of the assets of the township, same type of issue that we had at Klepper Park, you got nearly 60 acres of park township-owned land, was completely underutilized, completely a waste of township assets. We invested into it, and it has been very busy, and people have been very well-received with it, and I think that's the test. And Veterans Park is obviously less risk than Klepper Park based on its location, proximity, and the numbers that it can support, and it's only going to do more by us investing in that part of the community right there, especially with what you're having with essentially like a Main Street project happening right around the corner from there, so, yeah, I'm not swayed from my original position a year and a half, two years ago on it, so I'd like to see us move forward. I'll ask the question, do we have the funding for it now?
Yes, sir. We have, we have funded.
So we have funding for it, and we will also work towards a, I don't want any park levies, but I still firmly believe that we need to take steps to work, work towards the public-private partnerships and community engagement, so some things that other, and that was, that was part of the jump-off point with standing up a Parks and Rec Board, have that community feedback, listening, engagement, ambassadors, but also those are people that can become activated. If we, as a township, provide the right structure for being able to do some of the fundraising, and we can do that through the CIC, and we can do that through, and there's some different entities, and so you referenced Julis Park. They do have a community parks nonprofit that helps support that, so it's not just levies, but I, I think that that's, that's a step that we can look at in the future, but as far as that goes, I'd say you don't let the bureaucracy of that slow up from actually breaking ground and getting something moving forward, because, yeah, anyone can see if you go walk, walk it, especially with the rains that we just had, but you just, you go walk it anytime, it needs improvements. So I'm good. Do you need anything more?
No, I think I have clear direction. I will, we'll go ahead and finalize the renderings, look at the two quotes. We'll obviously use the low quote, assuming the renderings are comparable, and I'll get a purchase order out via DocuSign for the board. We'll move forward with that, and then we'll put the capital campaign together over a broader term, so at least add some really good thoughts on capital, on, on, you know, maybe some smaller donations for the community to participate, like things we can do similar to the Vets Plaza with bricks, you know, and then, you know, having those larger corporate, you know, sustaining sponsorships, so there's a lot of different resources we can draw on in that, but, yeah, I'll go ahead and get, we'll get it, we'll get it finalized, get it out to you.
Let's, let's also keep this on the schedule for capital bill budgeting. It's not my favorite thing for the state to use taxpayer dollars back on projects like this. I'd rather it come out of, out of people out of the goodness of their hearts that want to contribute through capital-type campaigns, but it is a tool that is there, and we are a township that has been penalized by the state of Ohio raiding the local government fund in 2011, so we do have to work to get our tax revenues back, so, so capital bill budget was planned for, for that as a tool as well, too. Sounds good.
You'll get a purchase order here by the end of the week.
Promise you'll love it, Mr. Becker.
What type, what type of schedule do you think, what type of schedule do you think that puts things on, Mr. Taylor?
For full week custom, we're thinking 12 to 16 weeks, and for a lot of the stuff's off-the-shelf stuff.
Correct, so we could probably eight to 12, and then if we start getting into a more custom.
To Mr. Wright's point, it's probably 12 to 16.
12 to 16 weeks, and if you remember with the Veterans Playground, a lot of the playground equipment stuff was in. The biggest delay on that was the turf, but we're actually moving into a good time to install one, assuming we place the order quickly, because they can get in and get the site prepped and ready and all that, and then the turf, as long as it's warm, they can glue it and do all the things that they would do, so. Is there a color preference on turf? I, I, I'm not, I don't like green. I'd like something else. I'm not going to lie. I want to be able to see it in the grass. I'm the wrong person to ask color.
Why don't, why don't you let Mr. Taylor send it out to the Parks Committee?
Okay.
Let them decide.
Let's hear from, let's hear from the people.
Perfect. I'm, I'm, I'm the wrong person to pick colors. Full disclosure.
Mr. Becker, would you like to pick out the colors?
Is that one, is that the actual design? Yeah, that, that is from DWA.
That's from DWA.
Yeah, that, I just literally got it.
Okay.
Okay, he's about to, he's about to smack me, Mr. Becker.
So that's the other design?
Yeah.
And then you guys have the one.
You have the other one.
You can watch all the smiling kids' faces, Mr. Becker, I promise.
Well, it sounds like that could be potentially in, in place to be able to be utilized this season, which would be wonderful, because I, again, I mean, that's, to me, that's something we've got to take care, you know, it's like, it's like painting your house, you know, right? It's like, it's like maintenance and upkeep, which you have to do, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just really hate to spend other people's money.
We have found our first public partner right here. Mr. Becker, did you just, did you just commit to writing a nice check to the park?
Yeah, I'm putting up a million dollars for those. Joke, that was a joke.
I thought you, okay, I thought, sorry. No, I appreciate it. All right. Gentlemen, then we'll move forward. No public hearings, no old business, on the new business, consent agenda. All right, so we move forward to consent agenda. Gentlemen will be looking to approve items 1, 2, and 3, the approval of minutes, March 11th, 2025, regular meeting minutes, March 11th, 2025, zoning meeting minutes. Item 2, the approval of payments as prepared by Mr. Campbell, fiscal officer. Item 3, approval of monthly financial report as prepared by Ron, Mr. Campbell, the fiscal officer. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, move forward to item Bravo, the motion agenda. Approval of purchase orders, we have a motion to approve the purchase orders, and gentlemen, would you like an introduction of them?
I think, yeah.
Mr. Row.
Mr. Wright, would you like to introduce the purchase orders?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Logue. So, first purchase order I have this evening is to Duke Energy for the Civic Center Trail, includes 15% contingency. It's $48,500. The second one is to Penn Care Inc. for a new ambulance. This is a 2025 capital improvement or capital budget item that was included. This is 214,250. That's for an ambulance purchase. Second one is to Purvis Systems Incorporated. This is for the Purvis computer dispatch system. This is something the fire services are moving toward, and this will be for the fire department side of dispatch, and again, another budget, budgeted and approved item, $87,211.45. Next item I have is a purchase order to Vogelpool Fire Equipment for a 2024 75-foot aerial quint ladder in the amount of 1,000, or $1,352,355. This is a demo unit that is ready to avail, ready and available now, whereas if we were to order a unit, it would be actually considerably more expensive and be 24 to 36 months before we would get that. This piece of equipment will actually replace two pieces of apparatus, an engine and a longer wheelbase ladder, the 97 ladder that you saw that's being, you know, disposed of. Would they take that on trade?
Yeah.
Actually going to take that on trade, so both, both units on that, so, so this would replace two with one and keep our ISO, you know, ratings high, because we'll have three, we'll continue to have three ladders.
Correct.
Which impacts insurance premiums, you know, for businesses and residents. Next item is to Par Public Safety. This is to outfit four new police cruisers in the amount of $84,819.79. The next item is for the police Wex Bank for their estimated fuel usage, an amount of $26,000. Next item is to DWA Recreation Inc., and we, and I'll discuss, there's two purchase orders related to another Veterans Park project tonight. This is for a shade area improvement around the basketball courts, to DWA Recreation Inc. in the amount of $100,885.60. Next item is to JK Mirror Corporation for grading and conduit work for the Civic Center walking trail in the amount of $52,000, and the final PO is to Mullins Maintenance LLC for the Veterans Park basketball, you know, plaza or whatever, flat work, it's for all the concrete work around there for $63,000. That concludes the process.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Trustee Dills? Any questions? Come on.
No questions.
Good to go. Trustee Becker?
I do. A lot of this is giving me heartburn. I'm just in no mood to spend money tonight. Uh, so there's nine items on here. Uh, you know, at, at a glance, there's only four of these that I'm a yes vote on. There's another one that I'm a maybe. Then there's four, I'm a likely no vote. So frankly, I'd like to um, I guess just go down, down these one at a time to discuss and vote on. Or I'll tell you the four I'm okay with. We can, we can get those out of the way right now and then discuss the other five.
Do we need to break them out? Can we just keep them all together?
You're asking that?
I mean.
I, we, we could.
Do, does that, does that give you heartburn just to break them apart? Or can we keep them all together?
You say keep them all together.
So just, just one, just one vote for, for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So not breaking them out separately.
Okay, well, if we do that, then I'm voting no on all nine.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but, okay. I'm just trying to, um, so we can discuss. Uh, I think that's probably what we need to have a discussion on as far as how the minds there.
We'll still, I'll explain the reason.
So let's, so do, so let, let me, let me just. What's the second?
We have a motion in a second, then we'll discuss.
Yeah, thank you. So do we have a motion to approve the um, purchase orders?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now, so we're in a discussion on it. Uh, let me just do this for maybe for tracking. Uh, Mr. Dills, are you a, I can give you the floor, but I'm just gonna ask straightforward, are you a no on any of the items here?
I'm not.
Okay. All right. I'm uh.
Just, just make it easier. Which are ones, which are ones Becker likes to, to vote yes on? Let's get those out.
I'm just saying, I'm, that's fine. I'm, we don't, well, for record keeping here, it's just. I'm supportive of, of the nine items as well. And so I'm watching our, our cash positions and uh, enter the year fifty million and ending balance right now is fifty-eight million and um, I'm with you as far as spending taxpayer dollars. But I also like to see them be utilizing and good use and I'm a believer in being efficient uh, here at the township level. So I'm gonna support all nine of these. So he supports them. So we can break them out if you'd like to break them out, uh, or we can do it in one vote. So we can just, because I think the end result there would be a, a passing. But also I want to give you the floor if you want to speak on the items that you don't want to support. Or why you would be a no vote if we just do one solid package. I'm just trying to keep it simple for the record moving forward.
That's fine. The easiest thing for me to do is probably just explain what my problem is.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
So first one on the list is um, lighting for the nature trail behind the building. I initially, I guess when this was first discussed, didn't have a problem with it. And that in and of itself, I don't have a problem with it. What I have a problem with is it is also connected to walking trail improvements for another fifty-two thousand dollars. And the two of those together is related to where are we going with this trail? Is it going to be paved someday, eighty-eight compliance someday? Is it gonna connect up to Eichols Road someday? You know, I, I, I need to know what the plan is. And, and, and if that's the plan, you know, how much more money are we talking about? I mean, there's, you know, I like the trail. I think it was a good idea. I, I've supported it up until tonight. Uh, and, and, you know, so it, it sounds like this is getting in a lot more money than I'm willing to spend.
Okay.
So that's why I have an objection to that, that first one. And, 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 and um, and as I explained also, it would be the eighth one on, on that list. So the second one on the list, the, the ambulance for two fourteen, you know, hey, I, you know, I understand it's expensive to run a township. So I'm a yes on that. Um, the, 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 the third one there, um, the dispatch system, I'm a yes on that. The fourth one, so that, 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 that's a maybe. And, and the reason I say maybe, and if we're gonna do this collectively, the answer can be no. So you get one point three, one point three and a half million dollars for, for a um, for a ladder truck. The truck in and of itself is a purchase I support. I'm okay with that. As much as I hate spending one point three million, but again, costs a lot of money to run a township. What I'm having concerns about is how is this going to be paid for? If we're gonna be borrowing money for a depreciating asset like a fire truck, I'm voting no. If we're gonna pay cash for it, I'm voting yes. So those are my thoughts on that item. Going down to the next one, the outfitting of four cruisers, eighty-four, eight, I'm fine with that. Fuel usage, twenty-six thousand, fine with that, this is what it is. Then you get down to Veterans Park, a shade comfort zone, a hundred thousand, eight, eight eighty-five. And then the last one on this list is, is uh, the Veterans Park Comfort Zone Concrete Improvements, another sixty-three thousand. So that's another hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars invested in Veterans Park. And this is completely unrelated to what we just talked about, the playground equipment. You know, gentlemen, I, I hear every day people talking about the roads. And, and, you know, and people drive the roads every day. They're hitting potholes every day. Our service department is doing a great job keeping up with it all, you know, but it's more than just potholes. I mean, people complain the whole road needs to be resurfaced. They want to know when theirs is gonna be next. I look down the list. It's not, it's, it's, it's not, you know, on the list coming up anytime soon. I, I, I have a big problem with spending a lot of money on things that are entertainment related. When we have needs, you know, what's the most important things in a township? Police, fire, roads. Well, the police and fire can't get anywhere without the roads. Cemetery, that, that, that's something required by the Ohio Everybody's Code. Parks or not, hey, I love parks as much as anybody else. I think it's important to have nice parks. Keep them upkeep, upkeep. It's a matter of priorities. And I just can't prioritize these items over the road. And, 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 you know, that's my problem with this list. And that's why I'm a no vote.
Okay. Well, I don't anticipate cutting back on the spending for the roads. And I'm, I'm proud of how we've worked together to um, was that last year where we quadrupled it and did ten miles in, in one year, the hundred and thirty-three miles in the township? Uh, I mean, it used to be a little under a mile a year. And so that's a testament to you guys working together on paving the roads and fixing the roads. Um, I'm thrilled about that. So um, one other question I'm gonna ask Mr. Wright, and then I'm gonna ask Mr. Wright, uh, I'll give you the floor. Um, one question on the funding mechanism of the Quint Ladder Truck. How do you, how's that anticipated? Is it financed? Or I believe it's gonna be financed, correct? Uh, finance versus cash? And let me just talk about maybe the purchase order for something similar. Uh, like that park improvement that we were just talking about, was that gonna be financed or cash?
So the park improvement that we were talking about would be cash. That's a cash, that's a cash deal. Uh, purchase order, put the purchase order in, put the order in.
Okay.
With the apparatus purchase.
Okay.
We have the opportunity to finance that. And that is a thirty-year piece of equipment. Chief, is that a thirty-year piece of equipment? Twenty-five years frontline, right? Or are, based on our ops and everything?
Twenty or frontline, ten reserve, depending on the, at that time.
Okay, so that's a piece of equipment we will own for thirty years, assuming it doesn't cataclysmic or fail or whatever. So, you know, because of that, and because we are getting, Mr. Campbell, we are getting good returns on our cash investments in our sweep accounts right now. Even though it's not quite what the interest rate is. I believe the spread between what the rate that we're financing and the actual cash sweep account rates, is, is it less than a hundred basis points, sir? We're at three, seven, five, and it's four, six?
Yeah, four.
Yep. So, so, so in essence, you're getting most of your interest that you're paying on the debt back just in your sweep accounts. And you keep your cash. And cash is, your cash assets are the most important thing you have here as a town, as a township. It allows you to respond to emergencies. It allows you to do the things, the continuous improvement in the things that you're working on. So I obviously would advocate that you find, that you would finance it and retain your cash. That's my personal take on it.
Is that our best uh, vehicle there, the financing vehicle? Is it the best interest rate on a vehicle uh, to be able to finance? I'm not saying vehicle in the term of the ladder truck. I'm saying the actual financial instrument that's being used. Because I'd be supportive of, if you're saying there's an alternative method to finance, I'd be fine with financing something like the park improvement and paying cash for the ladder truck. But I'm putting that out there.
I mean, it, it, it really, at the, at the end of the day, you can issue debt, you can issue standard debt uh, bonds. Like for facilities and things, which we just did the last meeting. And I think our blended rate on that facility is under four. Was it at three, nine?
Three, nine.
So we got three, nine on that. Um, the financing for this vehicle, for this, this Quint would be through Huntington, who we have our primary banking relationship with. Uh, and they quoted, what, four point six?
Four point six for ten years.
Which is not bad considering it's, you know, a wheeled chassis versus uh, going out. And then you're really, you're avoiding a lot of the cost of issuance that you would have with the traditional debt issue. Where you pay an F A, you pay bond council, you pay all those things. So that, so I would say in this particular instance, the vehicle, the vehicle, the, the financing vehicle that Huntington has available is probably less expensive for the township overall than it would be to take a traditional, to take traditional debt. That's my personal take on it. Um, just knowing what, you know, the F A's and the bond council guys, they work in multi, they work in multipliers at ten thousand. I mean, you know, which basically how much you're borrowing and.
Okay.
So, so there's that. And if I could speak to the, the long-term plan, so, so back here, you know, we had kind of a proof of concept moment, right? It's like, let's get it in, let's see what it looks like, let's see if people like it. Well, people generally liked it. But longer term, you saw with the completion of the roundabout projects on Eichols and Glen Estee, you now have sidewalks. What, Matt, less than a hundred feet off of this property line here? So in the not-too-distant future, you will have sidewalks down Eichols. Now, there is no cross-block connection from Eichols into East Gate South. That could potentially serve as a cross-block connection. And it's a much shorter run than it is to run sidewalks all the way down East Gate Square in front of Furniture Fair. There's bigger grades that you have to deal with, and it's a longer, longer run all the way down there. And so that improvement, you know, we've already done a lot of the grubbing and clearing. Um, you've got the lighting, which the best part about Duke Energy is when they put it in, they own it. Tree falls on a light, they fix it. We have, all we are doing is just paying the maintenance costs. That's it. Just, just the electric bill. Light goes out, pick up the phone, they come in and replace it. It's theirs forever. To do that, though, you have to do some significant earthwork. And if you're ever gonna make it part of a larger sidewalk network, it has to have certain grades and all those things. And so in lieu of putting lights in and not doing anything else, you go ahead and do the conduit, you do the excavation, you get it all benched in and ready. And it's gravel. And then if we have resources available, again, because we don't want to spend a ton of, we don't want to spend a ton of unbudgeted money. We have the ability to come back in and pave it next year. And I think that's actually responsible because it allows the dirt to settle. So that, that way you don't get failures in the actual pavement surface. So that, that, hopefully that answers some of that rationale in that.
Does that, does it end up being a, I heard Mr. Becker say ADA. Does it end up being something that is designed to be?
Yeah, choice one has given us plans. And it's, what are they, uh, four and a half percent grades, stuff like that?
So it'll be ADA compliant?
It's totally ADA compliant. It's like eight, nine feet wide. It's got embankment walls, the whole nine yards.
Okay. I sure that is a concern. So I just want to ask a question.
Okay. No, just Dills. Mr. Becker, I, I, I agree with you and I, I hear what you're saying, for what it's worth. I do, I do. The uh, uh, for the first thing with the, the lighting of the trail. We have a door in place because we know there's going to be future development, right? And it connects that whole back part there. Um, that's going to happen, right? I mean, not, not tomorrow. And it takes years to, to develop and have mixed use and all that. Uh, it's gonna happen. So do you want to do it now or do it later? It's, it's gonna have to happen. Um, and I think material labor are not gonna go down. Uh, you, you didn't get to attend the um, the uh, financial breakfast that we had um, here at the um, at the church that we have every year.
Economic.
Economic breakfast.
I was out of town.
Uh, yeah, yeah. So we've attended the last three and, and uh, uh, they, I mean, material labor's not gonna go down. So it's gonna have to happen, whether we like it or not, because we have to connect to Eichols. So um.
Have to.
We don't have to. We don't have to. Yeah, I mean, yeah. If we wanted to, to, with our vision and plan, I think, I think so. And then also uh, fire truck, um, we need it. It's overdue. Um, I think that's why all these fine gentlemen, I don't see ladies, fine gentlemen are here, um, support them. Uh, I, I would rather have the cash and not need it than need it and not have it. So I'm in favor of financing for that reason. And uh, um, and as far as the parks, so the, the area around the basketball courts that we're talking about. And um, and all this, I mean, and, and Veterans Park. I believe, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Wright, after this, we're, we're done with the parks.
Yeah.
For me, besides touch up maintenance, we're, we're done. And, and I, and look, we, we don't, I said it before, I said it, we don't have a parks levy. And, and our parks are definitely not even compared, I mean, go to, go to the Hummer Park, Batavia Township, we, we are falling behind. Uh, go to Jewelers Park, go to Miami Township's parks, we, we are not in the top ten in this area. We're just not. And so I think we're done after this. And I, I made a promise and, and, and to, to fulfill the parks. And that's why we created the Park Regrations Committee. And we're gonna get the parks up to date. So, but we're done after this. I, and I agree with you. Anything else comes up, I'm, we're, we're done. But I, it's gotta happen. I, I want it to happen. And I think the community wants it. Klepper Park is never, nobody knew where Klepper Park was even at. And then we made those upgrades and now it's packed. Veterans Park is the most popular park in the area. Can you imagine when this is done? I, I think the residents would like to see something they can see, feel, touch, have their family there. And, and right now I feel like it's falling short. So after this, I think we're done. And I fulfilled my promise of getting elected three and a half years ago for that. So that's my, that's my thoughts. So. I said mine. Call Lou.
Roll call. Mr. Dills? Do you wanna break it out?
Oh, whatever you want to do, Mr. Chairman. I've, I've said everything I got to say.
You're, you're coming. All right.
Yeah, roll call then. Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
No.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, for the discussion on that. Mr. Becker, thank you for, for keeping it as one purchase order. So, and thanks for sharing your items that you support there and why. All right, gentlemen, moving forward, item two, approval of memorandum of understanding for the Ask Me Local two, four, six, one. Uh, Mr. Wright, can you introduce this?
Sure. This is just a, uh, so the uh, the mediation, federal mediation service has basically come back and said they don't have enough mediators. There's not enough of them and they're overworked. And so their contract actually requires that you use F M C S, which is, that's the, the federal mediator service. And uh, in lieu of that, what we wanted to do was just bring a M O U forward that allows us to use F M C S or SERB or the American Arbitration Association or another mutually agreed mediator. You know, fortunately, we don't go to mediation very often, if at all, with, with Ask Me Local. And we really don't go to have a lot of issues, period. And, and I think that's just a testament to the great work and relationship between, you know, the board and, and the various unions that we have here. So it's just really just more of a housekeeping M O U, but this would authorize me to execute it. So.
All right. Uh, gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
No discussion? Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, we have uh, item three, establish the twenty twenty-five Union Township Fall Junk Days. This is a motion to establish the Township Fall Junk Days, October twenty-third through the October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Thursday and Friday, seven A M. to five P M. And Saturday, eight P M. to three P M. Do we have that motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, item four, Klepper Park Water Line Easement. This is a motion to approve the granting of a perpetual easement for purposes of constructing and dedicating a new public water main improvement in furtherance of the Klepper Water Main Extension Project being advanced but jointly by Union Township, Cleveland County, Ohio. Authorized and intentional ministry to execute the easement on behalf of the township. Do we have this motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Gentlemen, do you have any discussion? All right, so no further discussion. Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
No. I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm. I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry.
And Mr. Luke?
Yes.
It's not playground equipment, Mr. Becker, we're moving on, Ben.
It's all right, it's all right. Uh, item five, uh, Union Township Electric Vehicle Charging Station, grant design build authorization.
I bet you Mr. Becker votes yes on this.
So, uh, this, this is a motion to authorize the Township and Minister to handle or is designate to commer, commence the design build process, including the section, selection of the criterion engineer per requirements of Higher Rules Code, section one five three point six five through one five three point seven zero, inclusive construction of the two separate electric vehicle charging stations on township-owned properties as awarded through O K I Carbon Reduction Grant Funding Program. Do we have that motion to approve? And then I anticipate a little discussion, gentlemen.
So moved. Second.
All right, let's have a discussion. Uh, Mr. Wright, I kind of did the intro there. Remind and share with the community, is this something that the Township will make money on?
So with, uh, we are actually able, uh, there's no restriction on the ability for us to monetize these charging stations. So we, there's some apps like Gas Money, but they're for electric vehicle chargers. You can actually price them and look at market demand and pricing. So there is the ability for us to have some revenue off of these. So, so the answer is yes, we'll be able to make a little bit of money on that.
Is that a plan right now?
Yeah.
In effect?
Yep. And the machines that, uh, when we went into the grant process, the machines that we spec'd have the ability to have market demand pricing, and you can adjust them, and, and all of that. And then just, just a little bit more on this process. So, uh, the design build process, you know, we've been back and forth, we weren't sure that the funds were committed, and we finally got, um, a clear answer from O K I that the funds are committed.
Just recently?
Yeah, what was it, about a month ago, they said they are committed. And then, um, the state in the ODOT is the managing entity, and we couldn't get an answer from them whether, you know, how we would have to bid these out, you know, do you have to competitively bid them, how are you gonna do them? They said we could go design build. And so design build, as you know, is per O R C one fifty-three. And so that involves us picking a criterion engineer, which last fall, we put out a whole bunch of different proposals on, uh, it's called, uh, Quality-Based Selection Process. And so we rated McGill Smith Punchin as highly qualified to be Criterion Engineer Services, so we're currently trying to negotiate fee proposals with them to do the R F Q, the R F P, and then the Construction Administration component, they have to stamp those things. And then, uh, we have some experience with design build, you know, we've done some successful design build projects here in the township. You put out an R F Q, which is a pretty, just a basic solicitation, and then you do a more detailed R F P, which the Criterion Engineer approves both of those, and then you get responding firms that will submit, you know, their turnkey approach to build these projects. And then they evaluate those, and then we let a project, you know, with ODOT's blessing, and, and then it moves forward. And it's actually a pretty, um, it's actually a pretty easy process once you get into it and get rolling. So, uh, Mr. McCormick's been working on that, but I need the authorization from the board to, uh, officially commence that process. I don't want to be out operating on an island, so to speak, so.
How much is this project, how much is their cost to the Township?
Uh, I mean, we'll have cost for the Criterion Engineer Services, we'll have, uh, costs for, um, you know, incidental costs, legal advertisement and stuff like that. Mr. McCormick, these were a hundred percent, a hundred percent grants, right?
Yeah.
And it's what, about, how mu, give me the numbers, ballpark.
I'd say it's like four hundred thousand, maybe five hundred.
Five hundred, was that for one of them? I thought it was close to eight hundred total.
So about a.
I don't remember exactly how much it was.
Yeah, it was about a year ago, I was at the, uh, with O K I, with the board, and they're talking about these, this initiative, uh, and I did think, reach out to both of you and say, you know, take a look at it, because I know, Mr. Becker, you've had an interest of, of this. I've told O K I, though, that day, I said, boy, it would sure be great for the federal government to make the tax dollars available to, to the communities for things like roads, things that my residents care about. I've heard zero from anyone asking for an electric charging station. That probably makes us more dependent on China and our batteries and slave labor that's, that's putting the batteries in those cars. So I have a lot of issues with it. But, um, O K I's kind of sentiment too, was, yeah, we wish that they would just give us money for the roads and the bridges as well, like, so, um, surprised that these funds haven't been canceled. I'll just put it at that since January twenty fifth. So I guess that's what you're checking on, huh?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we didn't rush the date after we got the grant application award notice from O K I, because, you know, there was some question as to whether those funds were truly obligated or not, and, uh.
And Mr. McCormick, Mr. Wright, you, I'm sure you both know this, but with Wawa coming up out of the ground, they, they already, they told us when they did that plan that they're doing like eight electric charging stations there?
Yep.
Something. So as far as amenities for the community, um, I'll, I'll open the floor to the board here. Trustee Dills, trustee Becker, uh, if anyone has a comment on it, or maybe I'm just the only one where this catches my eye, but there's my history, and that's the reason why. The O K I meetings I've actually sat in, and I voiced the disgust with, with the way that our funding from the federal government comes, because it is the people's money. And I just don't think it's the best use of the tax dollars.
Now, Mr. Becker, you haven't spoke yet, but I think.
Waiting my turn.
I think, uh, I'm trying to think, I think we might have a first. Is this the first time you and I are gonna vote yes and Luke might vote no?
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a first.
I mean, basically, all of it's paid for, I don't really care, there's a lot of Teslas out there that are electric, whatever. I'd rather build my playgrounds than have electric car gas stations, I don't really care. I'm in favor of it, that's, that's the, that's all, so, whatever. I don't, I own gas vehicles, not electric, so, but they're out there, so, and if, and if eight hundred thousand's gonna be paid for, and it's basically free except for engineering, let's roll. I don't really care that much. You're up, Mr. Becker.
I, I, I hear you. It's, it's an instance, it's an instance where one vote's not gonna change the system. I get it.
We might have a first in it, I'm actually excited for this.
Who knows, I don't know. I don't know right now. Go ahead, Mr. Becker.
So my only concern is with pricing. Not that it's gonna be priced too high, that it's gonna be priced too low.
You don't want to undercut private operators.
To Mr. Luke's point, right, I don't want to be competing with Wawa.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I don't want people coming over here to charge up at the Civic Center because it's cheaper than buying electricity at Wawa. And I sure as hell don't want people who have chargers in their own garage coming up here because the rate's cheaper than what they're paying for at home. So if you're assuring us this won't be a problem, we're not gonna be, you know, we're gonna price it above Wawa, and anybody else in the area selling, you know, electric charging.
Is anyone gonna use it?
Well, so the, the first location is at the Park and Ride, which, you know, that's a good.
Oh, hold on, quick question, where is this location gonna be?
Uh, so one location's at the Park and Ride out here, so.
All the further extended parking lot?
Yeah, 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 so it's out further, and then the second location is at forty-three fifty-seven Ferguson Drive, which serves, you know, what, two hundred office employees there plus the apartments?
Yeah, we actually have three locations.
Oh, it's Civic Center, three different spots?
Yeah, we have one on the school side, which I think it's towards the back.
That's a single charger, right? Or it's a two, it's double armed, right?
And then there's one on the senior side, and then there's the one that you're talking about.
At the Park and Ride.
At forty-three fifty-seven Ferguson, East Gate Professional Office Park, it'll be on the north side, as you meet the next property, the building will look similar to the building of the Township.
The, between the Township's building and the, the Chambers building?
Yes, correct.
These are level two, level three?
Yeah, there's level two and level threes in there.
Yeah, the level, there's one level three at each location at least, and then the other ones are level two.
My, my concern, gentlemen, I want to share, and I, I think, I'm not trying to take the floor from you, but that location out there at the Park and Ride, what's the permanence of that, of that charging being there? I'd love to hear more community feedback, but in my mind, I, I at least have a strategic question in my mind, and that is, does that parking lot out there one day become part of a community asset of some type of mixed development or a police station? Because then you can have police officers walk across the building, use the gym, the fitness center, things like that. I hate to poorly spend federal money and tax dollars and put it somewhere that's not thought out for the long run, um, and I don't know if it can easily be moved. And I think that that's more valuable to have a building or have something there one day, maybe, maybe a crime lab with a police station, I don't know, something that's a big asset for the community, so.
I assume we can just tear them out whenever, right?
Yeah, but you can move them.
It's electric.
So, so just, my, my opinion is, we can, we can move. Throw them up, and then make sure we're not undercutting our local businesses, and then we, we, we move on.
Do they have to be at the Park and Ride?
Well, I mean, I think as part of the grant, we wanted to saturate this site so that we had, um, I think, what was it, Mark? We wanted to make sure people on the, using the post office or whatever would have the opportunity to use a charger, folks using the senior side would have the ability to use a charger.
Schools, post office.
Yeah, so you've got different user categories here. So, because you've got the seniors, you know, some, actually, some of those people drive electric vehicles.
Do, do we have any of these going into the parks? The Veterans Park, Klepper's Park?
Not right now.
That's where I see that most frequently, that you have a, a charging location like that. I don't know if it's possible based off utilities.
Uh, not based on our current utility loads there, I would say we would have to invest significantly at the parks to, and that's where a lot of the money is in this, it's in the actual power.
That huge thing from Duke across the street from Klepper Park, that's not a.
That's transmission, that's not service.
Saying the common question a resident would have.
But, but a lot of the costs in, in both projects, and, and it's obviously, the chargers are not that expensive, um, in comparison, the bulk of it is getting the power. So, um, because you have to have a lot of power available to, to run these things. So that's where the bulk of the expense in both, for, uh, Mark's pulling it up right now, you can sort of see it.
This one's three hundred and fifty grand, basically, and we have.
Is that bank a six, Mark? Six chargers, five?
One DC fast charger, and then five phase two charger, but the char, there's chargers on both sides.
Yeah, so each one has two arms.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
A point of information on all this, a level two charger, just explain to the public, what are we talking about up here? Level two charger is something you could have at home, it's some, it runs off a two-twenty line, similar to what your stove, your, your dryer. That kind of charger does not compete with Wawa. Wawa's gonna be using, it's called a DC fast charger, some people call it level three, I guess those terms are pretty much interchangeable anymore. So the, so the pricing on a level two would only need, need to be competitive with, you know, what you're, what you're paying for electricity at home.
Okay.
So I'd want us to be charging something greater than that amount. And, you know, for anybody coming up to the Civic Center to, you know, use, use the post office, come up here for a meeting, it's probably not even worth the trouble to plug into a level two, because they're, they're frankly just that slow. They're, they're called destination chargers, they're designed to be someplace for multiple hours or overnight charge. You know, it's, it's, it's the DC fast chargers are what can charge a vehicle in, you know, twenty, thirty, forty minutes, kind of in that timeframe. That's what Wawa's gonna have.
So how many DC, how many DC threes are you talking about putting in?
Each site has, well, a requirement of the grant was you had to include at least one fast charger at each location.
Okay.
So, um, there'll be a DC fast charger here at the Civic Center.
On this side.
On the post office side?
Yes.
Yes. So that's your most convenient oriented in and out.
Right.
Uh, trip on this side of the building, okay? And then you'll have level twos where, that makes sense if you're a park and ride user, you know, you would, you, because you're gonna be there most of the day. And then the seniors, they typically tend to be here longer, you know, hours versus minutes. And then, um, at the other location, it has a DC three as well, but it also has level twos. And the nice thing about that location is that's in a true mixed-use location with the office park and, what, two hundred and something residential units within walking distance? So we could envision, and I don't think they have any chargers on their, um, facility, so.
And it's close to children's and T Q L, we've had a lot of interest in that, and by the way, the numbers for total, the, the total number, um, awarded was around nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Yep.
So it's, we, we've had other opportunities to apply for funding, this was by far the best thing we've ever seen come in, and every other, also every other opportunity for funding, they wanted to charge their rates, and we would basically get nothing.
Okay. All right. Well, my, I don't know if anyone's got anything else to say, I mean, my, I, I know where my mind's at, um, and I'm shocked that, that the programs not got funding cut, or.
Shocked by electric chargers?
So I'm just thinking, I mean, Department of Government Efficiency, I'm surprised that this was not something that got cut and, and the funding taken, so, so I'm just shocked.
Thank you for that explanation, because I don't, I'm an electric vehicle, so I have zero desire to learn about it right now, maybe tomorrow's a different day, but thank you for that, educated me, I did not know any of that, so appreciate that. The only thing I hate annoying, that's annoying about them is if like, um, there's no parking, if a parking lot's packed, which that doesn't happen too much here, and then the only spots that are open is those charging stations, you're like, gosh dang it, you know, but besides that, I don't really care, they're fine. So it's free, and if we don't take the federal money, none, another municipality would, so, yeah.
You know, another, another point on all this, somebody might be wondering, okay, what's a level one charger?
Toaster?
Yes. Yes, that's the answer. It's typically like, like, um, twelve amps, plugs into a regular wall outlet, and it takes like three days to charge your vehicle, yes.
Okay. Good?
We had, we had a Cybertruck out front today.
Well, I'm glad that the Civic Center didn't catch on fire. Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
No.
Ooh.
He's on purpose, I appreciate that. He made me very happy.
I just don't agree with the funding.
Let's go, let's go, let's go celebrate after this, it was the first time.
Whatever I can do to bring you two closer together.
Yeah. Remember this one, April medium, all right.
Feels good to say no, doesn't it? All this crazy spending.
We get out of our agenda for reopening a public comment period, man, but I'd love to connect with you afterwards, yeah. Item six, Mount Carmel Revitalization Grant Program Discussion, uh, discussion of reinitiating the Mount Carmel Revitalization Grant Program for FY twenty twenty-five. Uh, Mr. Wright, why don't you go ahead and introduce this?
into the CIC for the Mount Carmel Grant Program. Mr. Campbell and I were in the CIC at that time. Um, kind of the only two people left that remember that. And, um, the, um, uh, it was a hundred thousand dollars and it was open to anybody in, uh, what we called the Mount Carmel corridor per our land use plan, right? And, uh, the minimum grant, if I remember, was five hundred dollars and it was dollar for dollar matching. So if we, you gotta, if you got a five thousand dollar grant, you had to spend an additional five thousand dollars. If you got a five hundred dollar grant, you had to spend five hundred dollars. And, and it was open and they could apply and everybody could kind of determine, you know, fund their own, or determine their own funding level based on ability and needs. So, you know, fast forward, we got a little bit of traction on that. We had a little bit of a bump. Um, you know, with, uh, what Mr. McCormick indicated, you know, we have some positive activity in Mount Carmel. Um, we have, uh, I guess there's been some significant renovation at the former sports page. Uh, that's a local firefighter guy that's running some kind of a barbecue joint or something. Uh, the, yep, sports bar and barbecue joint. We got Noble Chicken that just invested, you know, right across the street there. You've got the activity showing up for the La Rosa's Gateway Center. You got the Wawa, you got the McDonald's. So there are good things happening in Mount Carmel. So I feel like now's the time to maybe reinvest and provide that grant program for some of our smaller non corporate folks that have businesses in Mount Carmel, but may need a little bit of a lift, you know, to help, uh, you know, dollar for dollar match that. Now, one of the things I would like to do is because of the administrative burdens associated with making sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed with the grant, is if we move, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which again, it's fifteen years later, it's about equivalent level of investment, you know, based on two thousand eleven numbers versus now. Um, but I'd like to move the grant thresholds higher because I really want people to do more transformative projects. So I'd like to move the cap up, you know, to maybe twenty five or thirty thousand dollars. And that's again, remember, whatever the grant level is, they're matching. That, 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 that they only get, they get dollar for dollar matched, but I want to move the floor up to maybe a minimum twenty five hundred or five thousand dollars. Because, you know, you can get, I, I think we're looking, we're at the point where we really want real transformation in Mount Carmel. And what kind of projects are eligible? So facade renovations, um, windows, doors, siding, sidewalks, landscaping. I mean, we have a whole program of eligibility, um, that, that would be, you know, people would have to meet that. If it's something the board wants to do, I just wanted to have this discussion before I formalize it because we would need to have some resolutions to go ahead and re, reinvest and do that again. And then we'll have to have some purchase orders and all that. And before, you know, we, if we want to do it, if, if you want to do it, we, I could move it forward. If you want to wait, you want to think about it, you want to talk about it next meeting, I, I can basically use the prior program to build the current program if it's something the board wants to advance. But I wanted to bring it up for the board's discussion.
Gentlemen, do you have a motion to approve Mount Carmel Revitalization Grant Program?
So moved.
Second. Uh, open for discussion, questions, comments, trustee bills?
Just confirm me, this isn't like a reimbursement program. So for example, I'm just gonna use easy, easy numbers here for this sake of conversation. If I own a business on Mount Carmel and I want to redo the windows and that costs five thousand dollars, we match them five thousand dollars. It's not just a reimbursement check. They would have to take our five thousand dollars and put it towards also additional, you know, rehabbing of their property. Is that correct or no?
So what you would, so what you would do is they would bring us a project or a family of projects.
Yeah.
And let's just say you own, um, the, um, the old, the, the old Union building.
Yeah.
Okay. And that was a full rehab. Well, let's just say it wasn't. Well, I'm gonna put windows, doors, I'm gonna do the floors, I'm gonna restore that building. So that's a forty thousand dollar project. So I want to do that. I want to do that. I'm gonna make that building beautiful again. So let's just say that's a forty thousand dollar project and the grant thresholds, we set our maximum grant is twenty five thousand, okay? So they have to spend their twenty five to get our twenty five.
Got it.
Okay? Does that make sense?
So they have a forty thousand dollar project, we, they put in twenty, we put in twenty.
Correct. Yep. Dollar for dollar.
So, uh, well, gentlemen, I, I mean, we hear all about, all the time about Mount Carmel, Mount Carmel and how we don't give any attention. This is a way to give us some attention. Um, I can't see any downsides to it. I mean, and there's, you know, just, uh, I assume, I assume we would inspect, uh, after a period of time that that's gonna be put in there that, hey, they have so much time to get it done and not just, okay. Uh, how, how long do you want to open the door for? What are you thinking?
Well, I would say until the funding, uh, I, if we're gonna put the seed money into the CIC, we just run it until the funding's exhausted and it's at, it's on a rolling basis.
All right. And then also, uh, how do you advertise this?
So that's another great question. So Mark is working with Lisa to reinvigorate the Mount Carmel Business Owner kind of working group. And that was honestly the la, the grant the last time. I mean, we obviously published it here, you know, put some, social media wasn't where it is now, but I think the primary thing is gonna be word of mouth. If I remember administering the program the last time, it was like one person would get in and get a grant and then they go talk to their neighbor and their neighbor's like, well, you know, I really want to do this or that. And then they would come in and talk to, at, at the time, me, and then we would work on a project together and then fund that. And then they, we'd have receipts, we'd have quotes, I mean, it all gets approved. There's grants agreement, grant agreements, the whole nine yards. So.
Are, are we good with advertising and pushing a little bit more structured so that more, more people are energized and talking about it and the best projects are coming forward?
Yeah, I think.
And then, yeah.
We would use social media and we obviously, we have an incredibly competent.
I agree.
Um, communications director and, and Mark's.
We could put some, we could put them, we could put some themes in place for it as well, too. Right? Things that we want, entertainment, et cetera.
Yeah. I mean, I think that, that will help me draft the program. So I mean, what, what things are important for the board? What do you want to see? Obviously aesthetic improvements, right? We want to see family oriented entertainment, you know, things that support those types of uses, right? I mean, that's, I think I've heard those comments.
That whole corridor could really end up supporting, um, restaurants and destination because it's walkable as it is. And so I think that, that, to me, that's, I'd love to hear more from the community and feedback on that, but strategically, that's, that's has been my thought, but they welcome Gateway to Mount Carmel, uh, through there, revitalize the whole area.
Also, um, you're gonna have to, you know, the, the buck stops somewhere, so you're gonna have to set defined mapping areas, what, what that is. And it's just that this is the area. It's, this is the area. So if you're three streets over.
Correct.
This, this is the area. It is, what, you have to have a cutoff at some point and, uh, as long as that's defined. But I, 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 what's, is there any downsides? What, what am I missing here? I think it's great.
It's just, you know, it's just financial.
Cool.
But it's investing back in Mount Carmel.
Cool. I'm good. Mr. Becker, what are your thoughts?
Uh, I support yours.
All right.
I, I.
You're my.
Mr., Mr. Dills over here is a fountain of wisdom this evening. Um, no, I think it's important to, uh, invest in, uh, Mount Carmel and, um.
Great.
You know, I, I hear that regularly from, from the people and, 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 and I, I support it. And, um, yeah, I'm all in.
Oh, we'll go ahead and formalize the program and bring it back to the board.
All right.
Proud of you, Mr. Becker. So proud of you.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loog?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, item seven, roadway maintenance agreement between Union Township and Claremont County. This is, uh, the motion to approve authorized township ministry or fiscal officer execute roadway maintenance agreement, board of county commissioners of Claremont County, Ohio, for the certain landscaping, lighting and other miscellaneous improvements located within various counties maintained right, right of ways throughout Union Township as defined within the agreement. Gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
No discussion? Roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loog?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item eight, appointment to Union Township Zoning Commission to fill the unexpired term. Gentlemen, this is a motion to appoint Bradley Toth to Union Township Zoning Commission to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Bill Shannon, expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty eight, which was vacated due to Mr. Shannon's unfortunate death. Uh, gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? I'll just say, uh, Mr. Shannon has served the township for, for many, many years, uh, decade plus, right? Mr. Wright, about two decades?
Two decades.
Yeah.
Twenty four.
Twenty four.
Good man.
A generation.
Yeah. So, um, yeah. So we appreciate the service.
He's a good man.
We lost a great guy there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, for those of you that didn't know, uh, Bill Shannon, he, he, he came in one day and he said, I, I don't like the dis, I don't like the dispatchers walking out to their cars with no security. So he bought, uh, surveillance cameras for the back of the police station. I thought that was just incredible that somebody would do that. And Bill just, uh, he's, he's always been in the community, great guy, good friend. Uh, we get, we met, we're gonna miss him.
Yep.
Good guy.
Uh, Mr. Wright, um, what, what do we know of his, uh, his, his kin around here? Kids, family around here?
Just, I, I met his daughter at his, uh, at his funeral service.
Son and daughter. Yeah, he's got a son and daughter here.
All right. Well, I just, I'll, I'll give it to both of you guys if you want to consider, uh, or Mr. Wright, if you consider, uh, a, uh, you know, a township appreciation for, for Mr. Shannon or, or Township Day for Mr. Shannon, uh, for his services, his twenty four years. Uh, that's something I'd support, so.
Yeah, we, we give employees, you know, twenty year plaques and I'm totally okay with giving him a plaque as family, so no problem.
Well, I just mean, I mean a day, like a Bill Shannon day in Union Township, so, yeah. But that as well. I mean, but just, I'm asking the, the staff to execute that, take that forward, let me know what you need for, for next meeting, if we need to do a, um, uh, a, sorry.
I'll take care of it.
A motion, yeah, for it.
I'll take care of it.
All right, thank you. Uh, okay, roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loog?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item nine, Union Township Federal U, uh, US Government Spending and Procurement Policy. Uh, gentlemen, this is a motion to adopt the federal UG spending procurement policy for Union Township. Ohio is prepared by the township ministry or fiscal officer. Um, gentlemen, either one of you gonna give any, a quick thirty second intro on it, if that's what we'll take or?
Quick thirty seconds?
Yeah.
This is, uh, this was recommended by the current audit that we're going through and basically it, it just defines how you're spending, uh, federal dollars and, uh, puts some parameters around that, which, um, if the SLF or F money was pretty wide open, uh, but it does put some, uh, guardrails around other spending that could happen. That was suggested that, that we enacted and then, uh, have it approved at the next meeting.
Okay.
So it's a policy.
Yeah.
Cause it's a policy.
So you're saying, Mr. Campbell, by us adopting this, we're going to have to be allocable and allowable expenses only to grant funds that necessarily relate back to the purpose of the fund. And so we can't take in OKI federal funding and, uh, and say that it's for, uh, electric chargers and pave some roads with it, right? Cause that would be not meet the intent, right?
That's what I meant by guardrails.
Would not be allowable under the project.
Correct. Correct. That's correct.
Well, that's the bummer there. I'm joking. All right. Um, I think that that's great, so cost principles. Uh, gentlemen, um, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion further? Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loog?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I think without us having the policy, we would be beholden to the, uh, to that criteria for allowable and allocable, uh, to the necessary expense of it as regardless, but I think this is great to have that in the policy.
No, that was, it was highly suggested by them and I told them, I said, perfect timing because we have a meeting Tuesday night, we'll present it to the board Tuesday night.
Too many pitfalls that people fall through with that.
Correct.
Uh, one thing that you'll see in, uh, uh, defense industry is, is someone may charge like a meal or something if they're a contractor and it's, uh, alcohol explicitly is a, uh, it's not authorized. So, all right, so, um, item ten, Union Township Village of Batavia, JED, number nine, board appointments. Motion to appoint the following persons serving various capacities indicating Union Township Village of Batavia Joint Economic Development District, number nine, board directors. JED number nine is John Becker, township member, term ending four eight, twenty twenty seven. Justin Carey, business member, term ending four eight, twenty twenty eight. Cody Lewis, worker member, term ending four eight, twenty twenty nine. Gentlemen, do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loog?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item eleven, various Union Township City Milford, JED board appointments. Motion to appoint the following persons serving various capacities of Union Township City Milford, Joint Economic Development District. JED number one, John Becker, township member, term ending six, twenty seven, twenty twenty nine. JED two, three, four, five, no appointments expiring. JED six, John Becker, township member, term ending five, nine, twenty twenty nine. Jennifer Howard, worker member, term ending five, nine, twenty twenty nine. And JED seven, John Becker, township member, term ending twelve, ten, twenty twenty nine. Gentlemen, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Becker, thanks for doing all that.
Thank you as well, Mr. Becker. Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Loog?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, item Charlie, Legislative Agenda Resolution, twenty twenty five dash one seven, resolution authorizing exec, execution, delivery of petition to establish Union Township New Community Authority District. This adopts resolution, uh, twenty twenty five seventeen, authorizing execution and delivery of petition establishing township new community authority district under high vice code three, four, nine, approving related matters. Mr. Wright, is there anything that you need to add as a necessity there?
Sure, just, uh, this is the first step of many and, you know, we have great, um, counsel and, and, uh, they've been walking us through this, but this is just an economic development tool, um, new community authorities. The township is actually functioning as, um, just a, just a, in the petition, that since the township's originating it, we control the entire process. So there's, uh, once a, an NCA's forum, there's like several members, there's seven members total. There's a trustee representative, an organizing board or an organizing commission, group of three, and then a developer, group of three. And because the trustees are both the organizing, um, the organizing body and then also the developer, you get to appoint all of the NCA membership. So you get to, this is basically a township economic development tool. And, uh, there's multiple steps. Um, so this is really the first step and then, uh, we have to file a petition, um, And, uh, there's multiple steps, um, so this is really the first step. And then, uh, we have to file a petition, um, no later than April twenty sixth or no earlier than April twenty sixth, uh, so that'll be May second. Uh, we have to pass a resolution of sufficiency at the May thirteenth meeting. We have to notice a public hearing for three consecutive weeks, hold a public hearing, hold and schedule a public hearing on the tenth and then have a resolution approving the NCA and then there'll be, so this is a multi-tier process, it's a lot like a JED, you know, in, in the way you, you, you have to go through certain steps to do it. So this is really the first step. You're just authorizing me to file a petition.
All right, and this is again, uh, the new community authority that we voiced our concerns to support, uh, to our legislation and, and help, help usher it through, so, uh, foresight and now finally getting into execution of it. Gentlemen, uh, any further discussion?
So moved.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution twenty twenty five dash one eight, den announcement for Kit for Survey Monkey Inc., um, Mr. Campbell, is this just a bill that came due that we need to pay?
So what happened on this was we, we, um, our IT director went to cancel this subscription and there was a, uh, basically we didn't make the timing to get it canceled. Uh, we opted to go with some, somebody else's cheaper, but we wound up, we had to keep it because we didn't make the timing.
Good.
Quite honestly.
All right.
Just the approval to pay that.
To pay the bill.
Yes.
All right, how much roughly is the bill for?
It's, uh,
Just transparency.
Seventy seven hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy seven cents.
Okay. All right. All right, uh, gentlemen, uh, do we have a motion to approve the den, den announcement certificate?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, uh, resolution twenty twenty five dash one nine, resolution authorizing disposal of obsolete property via gov deals. Uh, this authorizes the sale, transfer of various obsolete vehicles, equipment currently signed, Union Township Police Department, listed in the resolution via internet auction through liquidity service op- operations LLC, giving business gov deals in accordance with provisions of section five oh five point one zero alpha one and five oh five one zero delta of the Ohio Vice Code as applicable. Uh, gentlemen, do you need a further, um, introduction on that topic? Uh, do we have approval for resolution twenty twenty five dash one nine?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, gentlemen? Okay. Roll call, Mr. Campbell?
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'll just read off the, that was for a two thousand seventeen Ford Police Interceptor, a two thousand ten Harley Davidson Motorcycle and two thousand five International four three hundred ambulance utilities, a hundred and two thousand miles on it. Speed, sentry, monitoring signs and intoxicilizer five thousand. All right, gentlemen, uh, moving on, item four. Resolution twenty twenty five dash two zero, resolution authorizing community development block grant fund fiscal year twenty twenty five grant application. Uh, this authorizes the filing of a grant application for CDBG funds for twenty twenty five. Uh, Mr. Wright, is there currently, uh, a target for those CDBG funds?
Yeah, so we're gonna try for, um, uh, the same project, uh, we got passed over for last year. According to the county, the project actually was a good project, they liked it. It was for a parking lot and pedestrian improvements and it's kind of the, I call it the beachhead at Mount Carmel Park. Um, sort of the biggest challenge with Mount Carmel Park is nobody goes there because there's nowhere for them to park. And so, you know, we can't improve the area further, we can't invest in a restroom, we can't do anything unless people can actually go, so. Mr. McCormick's been working on that and, uh,
Can we use some of those OKI funds to put a electric, uh, uh, phase two in? Because knowing cost principles for federal government funds, it's a necessarily related expense to have to have the pavement to be able to have your electric charging station.
I wish.
Um, it's a cost, it's allowable and allowable to the project.
We talked to Desmond Maita, he's actually great to work with at the county, but, uh,
Do this stuff for a living.
He, um, they, they chose to push the funding to some communities that have never gotten funding before. So I think if we can get the beachhead there and, and get the parking, we can invest in that part.
Just telling you where we can partner up to the OKI funds.
I understand.
All right, that's fine, I won't, I won't push you into the gray too much. All right, um, I'm good on that, gentlemen, any further discussion?
Were you being serious?
I'm being serious, it's a necessarily related expense.
No, no more for me.
You can, you can make the case for it. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I think you've said quite enough.
I thought you were joking at first.
You'd have to look at the full details of the grant application itself, but you go straight to the cost principles of it, yeah. You wanna put a, put a charging station in your jurisdiction and it's related to it that you would need to have the pavement and things around it for the car to actually get to the charging station, that's.
I think we should put one on Rumpkey Road.
That's how some of this works.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
Okay.
Again, that was a joke, I'm kidding.
Uh, do we have a motion to approve the CBG FY twenty five grant?
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, great, a lot of business to have covered, gentlemen, uh, comments from the board now, open to you, trustee Dills.
All right. Gentlemen, I'm gonna talk about something that's really not township related at all. It's a, it's a difficult topic to bring up, but it's been on my heart for the past couple of weeks and I was hoping it was gonna resolve itself and it didn't. Uh, so some of you may or may not know about a situation out of Milford High School. And now this, this, this came to me, I didn't go to it, it fell in my lap and I had quite a few people bring it up to me and, and then it, um, pulled on my heartstrings and I wanted to talk about it. So, uh, there was a young lady, um, uh, and she passed away two years ago, um, took her own life. She was a sophomore in high school, her name was Kaylee Maston. And, and Milford's doing a good job, but they're not doing a great job. Um, and keep in mind, I'm a Milford Eagle, I graduated from Milford, I played varsity soccer, wrestled and I spent several years on the Milford Marketing DECA Advisory Board for several years and, and sponsored students, I, I'd support Milford. But I feel like they are dropping the ball here. And so, uh, what happened was is, is, um, they are allowing, uh, they're gonna give a diploma, an honorary diploma to the, to her mother and her family and then they're also going to read off her name and put her name in the, in the book, but that's it. And her mother and family's requesting that, uh, a chair be placed where she would sit at with perhaps maybe a picture. And, uh, Milford won't do it, they're not budging on it. And, uh, and so this was brought to my attention and I dove into it quite a bit. Um, and I met with Superintendent John Spicer, talked to him and, great guy, we had great dialogue back and forth. Um, he was, he was very open to discussion, even though we're on opposite ends of this decision, but he's not budging, he won't, he won't do it and, and I personally think it's wrong, I do, I don't think it's that big of a deal. His argument is, is that, um, according to doctors and, and counselors, that it'll cause more grief and pain for the students and the families to see an empty chair there than it would do good and I, I strongly disagree. Um, and I, I, I would say, has there been any studies done on the, the good that it does? I think it gives closure, I think it, um, and so I, I had, um, you know, and there's also a petition going around and there's almost six thousand five hundred signatures, uh, in support of this mother, allowing her to have a chair for her little girl for graduation next month. So I, I had talked to a, a few people that I consider, um, mentors and, and, you know, my elders and to get their advice and, and they all agree with me, and they, they think that the Milford schools is in the wrong and I, I completely agree with this. And so, um, and then I, I talked to my sophomore, I've got a sophomore in high school, my daughter Sydney, and I had a very adult-like conversation with her and I told her the situation and I said, what would you want your dad to do if you're in the same situation? And she said she would want the chair there to honor her. And, uh, I'm like, well, do you want me to make some noise about this and draw attention to it? And she's like, yeah, absolutely, I think you should, dad. And, uh, and I'm like, there might be some haters out there and I might get some negative PR on it, are you sure? And, uh, and she's like, it's worth it, it's a good cause and I think you should. And, and, uh, uh, so with that being said, um, I don't know how many people watch these township meetings, um, but this is me doing just that. And you might say, well, you're a trustee for Union Township, stay in your lane and let the schools handle it. And maybe you're right, I thought about that too, uh, but for as far as I know, no one from Milford City Council, no one from, uh, Miami Township and no one from the Milford School Board is saying anything. So this is me doing just that. And, uh, not only do I go to Milford, but some of Milford is in our district, uh, you have Polo Fields and Terrace Ridge. And so, uh, this is me doing just that and, and if anybody disagrees with me, it's okay, I understand the disagreement part of it, but I don't think it's that big of a deal. And, uh, and if, if no one else wants to stand up for this mom, then, uh, then it would be just me, but that's my personal opinion. And, uh, uh, I think, uh, Milford Schools is dropping the ball and I think, uh, hopefully this puts pressure on schools to have a policy to allow this if the family wants to allow this. And so the good thing is, is I talked to the mom, Julie, and, you know, I said, hey, you know, good things can happen out of bad situations, so hopefully this puts schools on notice to have a policy to, if a family wants to have certain things done, that they allow it. And I understand the buck has to stop somewhere, but still, um, I think that this little girl made a tragic mistake, she didn't know what she was doing. Beautiful girl, played soccer, AP courses in, in high school and, uh, and personally, I don't think it's a big deal. And, uh, I think it'd be a great way to have closure for a lot of people and so, just my personal opinion and gentlemen, I don't expect you to comment on that cause, um, I came out of nowhere, but, uh, that is my soapbox, sir, that's all I have.
I, you, you got me to say a few words on it, I will, uh, but, but, Florida, Mr. Becker?
Um, I'll be very, very brief. First off, I just like to apply Mr. Dills' comments, I like that a lot.
Thank you, sir.
Like, well, you've handled all that. Um, beyond that, I've had plenty to say on multiple topics, uh, this evening and don't have anything else to add.
Uh, okay, yeah, hey, so. Thank you for sharing that. You gave me some things to think about and some notes I wrote down here. Uh, so I just, I'm gonna go through them and I'm gonna talk with both of you as board members on this, so I wanna do this timely to keep us moving through the evening here, so. Um, Milford, um, did, I don't know how it got to it, uh, but I do know several years ago, I'm sure because somebody asked in the community or the students put it forward, uh, they had homecoming queen and queen and that's a very outward facing public response to something the residents or students or someone must have asked for, uh, which you could make the same sentiment that, that can be damaging to, uh, however, Mr. Spicer may have relayed this to you, that by honoring someone's empty chair could bring up pain and difficult feelings, emotions and be, I, I could say the same is very much true for, um, a number of different people. Maybe people that have a, a, a seven, five and three-year-old and sending them to, to a public school system and don't necessarily wanna have to have the conversation about queen and queen, uh, and American family values at that, at that age or maybe you have to for a foundational, uh, lesson. Um, so I think that it's, uh, talking out both sides of their mouth. Um, and I believe that, uh, it would not bring pain. I've, I've, I'm someone that's been through, uh, a lot of, um, uh, trauma with death, well, been nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, uh, with one of those combat engagements Iraq war, one hundred and forty-four was deployed and twenty-three were killed and thirty-seven wounded. And, uh, we honored their memory and we still honor their memory and every time I talk about them and tell you that, I'm honoring their memory. Um, and that brings healing on that. So, um, so as that goes, I'm looked up, their graduation's May eighteenth. I think that I, I'd be as bold, gentlemen, to say that we passed some type of written resolution honoring this girl and we're also calling on Milford to support the wishes of the mother. And when's the next time that we send TIF money and what happens if we don't send TIF money to Milford?
S- s- so, you know, I, I did research on it and, uh, not really much we can do. If it's, if we do a TIF district and it's in that school district, they, they gotta.
It's fine, I'm sure we can delay paying it, I'm sure they can, I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Becker will pull something out of a purchase order and I can pull something out of a purchase order for a bit of time.
But, uh,
I'm serious, right?
But, uh, the, uh, the, the JED money's gotta go to Milford, Milford's not required to give that, any of that to school, that's up their choice, but the TIF money has to go.
The TIF money for the school.
Has to go to the school.
I know that.
Yeah, okay.
I know that, but for the TIF money to go to the school, we have to vote on it. We have to prove it, that's what I'm saying.
Co- correct.
That's what I'm saying. And I'm, I'm open to hear what the response is when, when it gets delayed. Not saying do anything wrong, I'm saying it gets delayed.
Yeah, I see.
Delay the TIF money. I think it's a very reasonable request from this board that sends lots of money over to, to Milford Schools.
I don't wanna break any laws, but.
I don't believe that we would be.
As you're saying.
Uh, but I, I wanna ask the law director to take a look at it, so. Um, and, and to that note too, people shouldn't have to go through that, I think it's a good reach out to the governor's office, uh, as well to, to see if the legislation, uh, legislators and, um, if they wanna put something in place in the future that school systems, you should be able to, you should be, a fa- a family grieving should reasonably be able to make the request. Um, you know, it sits home for me, uh, we had a couple classmates killed in high school, uh, sixteen years old and we honored them at the high school graduation ceremony two years later, so, um, thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you, sir.
So I don't know if you guys wanna support any type of resolution on that, I'd say a formal letter, I'd say something. I'd, I'd say resolution and place it in that chair honoring the girl and that's our request, that's our ask. And let it package hand in hand with the TIF money. That's my piece, if one of you will back me.
Well, I didn't expect either of anyone to comment on it, cause I knew, uh, so, um, but I, I, uh, whatever you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I, cause I, I fully support this mother and I just, I don't think the chair is that big of a deal. I think, I think it brings more peace and closure than it does anything else, if you ask me, so. That's, that's my thoughts.
I'd like, Corey, I see you writing some notes down, if you can deep dive into it with, with, with Mr. Conover maybe or a law director. I don't want the township ever to be exposed to anything that we shouldn't be exposed to, but, um, as someone that strives for doing what's right in our community.
So, um,
You gotta stand up sometimes.
Can I, can I, may I make just a couple of comments? So we are actually under a settlement agreement with Milford Schools related to our TIF right now. And, um, I don't want to spend Union Township taxpayer resources defending that agreement or an action or a breach on that. That said, I'll talk to Mr. Conover about, about the, the, the payments and all that because the board, oh, again, I'll do whatever you guys want.
No, no, we, ma- ma- make, make the payments, I mean, I don't wanna, we're not, we're not, we're not.
I don't wanna be in breach.
Break any rules or breach anything.
I'm not saying break any rules, I'm saying, I'm sure there's a way to delay the payments.
But what I.
Make this a strong request, they should, they should reasonably be able to hear us.
But what I, I, I was writing down, sir, was if I heard you correctly, you wanted to do a proclamation?
I was, I was thinking that.
So we have a meeting on the thirteenth. And their graduation is when?
May eighteenth. I was saying, research it if that's, I, I'm, I'm for it if other people are for it, I'm for it if the family's for it, I'm for it if the mother's for it. I'm for it if who Mr. Dills has been speaking to is for it.
So I just wanna say, uh,
Put all offers on the table, that's what I'm saying.
Just saying, um, you know, we, we get elected to do our absolute best to make the best decisions for the township in the four years that we're here and so, sometimes I just like to, uh, have a voice. I'm not asking for any pressure to put a proclamation together, if we, if we decided to do that, I, I would absolutely sign it, but that, that was, I, I didn't, I honestly did not expect either one of you to comment on it. Um, it was just past two weeks, I've been waiting to see if Milford was going to, cause six thousand five hundred signatures is a lot of signatures considering there's a graduating class of five hundred, right? I assumed, I thought they were going to change their policy for the greater good, I thought they were going to and they didn't. And I'm like, well, okay, I've been waiting for three weeks on this and I haven't. And so, um, I decided tonight during my comments, I was going to talk about it, so, um, um, I, I'm not expecting any, anyone else to join me in that, but if, if you all would so choose, then I'd, I'd be grateful, so.
I'm sure, I'm sure that some of those six thousand five hundred signatures are Union Township residents and, and we can voice their concern. I think that that's how we, I think that that's something that we do.
Got it.
So, but thank you for, you've been wearing it on your, your heart and appreciate you sharing it and I'm.
I just got a sophomore daughter and, and it just hit me, it hit me hard.
I, so.
Yeah. Oh, good, okay.
What do you think, Mr. Becker?
I'd certainly support some type of proclamation.
Some type of, okay, there, we, we got, I think all three.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
With you on the details, Mr. Dills?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Please feed him details on, yeah, perfect. All right, great, thank you. Um, Mr. Okay, we'll close this out then on board comments, thanks for sharing that.
Thank you, sir.
Upcoming events, the Parks and Rec Committee will meet on Thursday, April tenth, twenty twenty five, five p.m. at Union Township Civic Center. The Union Township Zoning Commission will meet on Wednesday, April twenty third, twenty twenty five, seven p.m. to discuss zoning tax amendment proposals. No cases will be reviewed. The Union Township Board of Zoning Appeals will meet on Thursday, May first, twenty twenty five, at seven p.m. if cases are received. The Union Township Board of Trustees, next rally meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five, at six p.m. Each year, Union Township Police Department partners with Crime Stoppers for the Annual Drug Drop and Paper Shred Event. This free event provides opportunity for residents to safely dispose of any unused or unexpired prescription drugs and over-the-counter medications. Residents are also encouraged to bring personal documents such as financial statements for shredding. The, the event is located at Furniture Fair located at four three six three East Gate Square Drive from eight a.m. to noon on Saturday, April twelfth, twenty twenty five. Uh, once again, we'll have all that information posted on our website, so that is for Crime Stoppers Annual Drug Drop and Paper Shred Event. Union Township Spring Junk Days will occur April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five through April twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, Thursday and Friday, seven a.m. to five p.m. and Saturday, eight a.m. to three p.m. The drop-off location is located at four three one two Glen Stacy-Withamsville Road. The spring, uh, family movie night is on Saturday, May third, on Veteran, at Veterans Park Memorial with a movie beginning at dusk. Residents are encouraged to go to our Facebook page to vote for which movie they would like to see played. You're invited to celebrate National Bike Safety Month with Union Township this May. The Union Township Police Department will host a bike safety event for families on Saturday, May tenth, from ten a.m. to noon on the Civic Center campus. Officers will check that your helmet fits correctly, you have the right size bike, teach your hand signals to use while riding and more. A limited amount of free medium child helmets will be provided as first come, first served while supplies last. Also, on Saturday, May tenth, Susan Sherman, Cincinnati Cycle Club Safety Director, will host a Sharing the Road Training Event at the Union Township Civic Center beginning at ten a.m. Uh, so again, there is gonna be a limited amount of free medium child helmets to be provided, first come, first served while supplies last. And that is on Saturday, May tenth, at ten a.m. at the Civic Center. The next CPR AED training provided by Union Township Fire Department is on Saturday, May seventeenth, from nine a.m. to one p.m. Following the training, participants will receive a certification from the American Safety and Health Institute. Registration is on the township's website. Union Township Annual Family Catch and Release Event is on Saturday, May seventeenth at Klepper Park. Registration for the event begins at nine a.m. near the Klepper Park Haunt, followed by catch and release fishing from ten a.m. to noon. The annual family catch and release event will occur rain or shine. Consider using Union Township Retail Post Office in the lower level of Civic Center for all of your shipping and mailing needs. Gentlemen, at this time, uh, we've, and we've got, uh, executive session on the, uh, agenda. Uh, entertain a motion to entertain, uh, to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio Vice Code one two one point two two, go as follows. To consider the purchase of property for public purposes of premature disclosure of information will give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest pursuant to the Ohio Vice Code, section one two one point two two golf two. And item two, to consider confidential information related to the marketing plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance or to negotiations with political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance, provided that both of the following conditions apply, alpha, the information is directly related to requests for economic development assistance that is to be provided or administered under any provision of chapter seven one five, seven two fives, one seven two four or one seven two eight or section seven zero one point zero seven three seven three five point six seven two three seven three five point seven zero five seven zero nine point four zero to five seven zero nine point four three, five seven zero nine point six one to five seven zero nine point six nine, five seven zero nine point seven three to the five seven zero nine point seven five or five seven zero nine point seven seven to five seven zero nine point eight one of the Ohio Vice Code or that involves public infrastructure improvements or the extension of utility services that directly related to economic development project and be a unanimous form of a public body determined by a roll call that the executive session is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in the conjunction with economic development project pursuant to Ohio Vice Code, section one two one point golf eight. Do we have that motion to approve?
I didn't quite hear that motion, sir, can you repeat all that?
Yeah, uh-huh.
So, so moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
We're into an executive session at eight twenty six p.m.
All right, so ladies and gentlemen that are attending, we'll be in our executive session, when we come back, we, we take no action during executive session, so all that will take place is we'll come back, we'll have a motion to exit executive session with no action taken and a motion to adjourn, so, uh, if you were to stick around, uh, you're more welcome to, but. Uh, if you were to stick around, uh, you're more welcome to, but, um, there's not much for you to see from here. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep. All right, gentlemen, this is my entertaining motion to exit executive session with no action taken.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
We're out of executive session at 9:16 PM with no action taken.
All right, gentlemen, I entertain motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
We're adjourned at 9:16 PM.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.